This meeting to order for Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Riordan.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Dylan. We're going to get started with our invocation given by Pastor Joe Bryant of Grace Baptist Church, followed by the pledge led by Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. If everybody will stand, please.
Now, I was just looking here. This says three minutes. Is that limit for my prayer time, too?
For you, yes.
One minute and thirty seconds.
For you, yes.
All right.
I'll give you ten extra seconds.
Heavenly Father, we come to you very humbly right now. In the name of Jesus, we give you thanks and praise for who you are, your great and awesome God that you are. God, you blessed us so much and so greatly, reached down and touched our city and the places around us. God, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for your provision. We thank you for your protection. Now, we're asking for forgiveness, cleansing of our hearts and minds so that good thoughts would come through what's going to happen over the next hour or so. Asking now for help with our country and the hate and the division, and God asking for your intervention to put healing and good things back into our country again. And be with our leaders as this is happening. God had asked you be with our state and that you would intervene with what's going on across New Mexico. And that your influence would be over our leaders. And then God had asked that you would be with this group of commissioners. God had asked that you give them wisdom. God had asked you to give them good discernment, and they'd make decisions which are profitable, honest, and true. And God had asked you to continue to bless the great city of Alamo Gordo and all that's done and said, that we would always acknowledge you and your presence in our life. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Do I mean the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okey-dokey. What am I doing here? Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from, I'm sorry, Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie. Are we going to be able to put the vote up, or?
It doesn't appear to be responding, so I'll do an oral roll call vote where I just call your names and you just say aye or nay or abstain. Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Aye.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Aye.
Commissioner Josh Riordan.
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Aye.
Mayor Susan Payne.
Aye. And motion passes seven zero. So we're going to do that. Are we going to do a roll call vote for each item?
I believe so. I'll keep trying and see if it'll work, but right now, we're doing things the old-fashioned way.
Okay, all right. What did we do before? Everything wasn't a roll call vote. What did we do?
Just certain ones.
I was like, we need to go back old school, but I don't remember what old school is now, sorry.
Resolutions and ordinances, I think, were roll call. Everything else was just a regular vote.
Commissioner Riordan is correct.
Yeah, so we'll just do that?
We can do that.
Yeah, just back in the old days, like a year ago, remember? Yeah.
That's quite a while ago.
When I really hated putting up the boat, yeah. Now, I'm like, I don't remember what we did before that. Okay, all right, we'll just do it like that. That's fine. Okay, we are going to move on to presentations. We have a presentation from Dusty Wright, Arrowhead Investment Group. Presentation regarding a development matter in Chapter twenty-eight, Watersuiters and Sewage Disposal Clarification.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. My name is Dusty Wright. I'm representing Arrowhead Investment Group, along with my brother, who's my partner in this. We won't be covering the water and sewage issue as much tonight. That's something we're still working on with city staff. As a, tonight, we're representing Arrowhead Investment Group. We're the owner of three of four remaining vacant lots in Quail Hollow subdivision, number two. For reference, in the agenda packet, if you'll see, page sixty-three and sixty-four are the plats of that subdivision. And this is the final phase of Quail Hollow here off of Acateo in South Florida. Is there a way you could pull those up?
We have them on our computer. Oh, he's got them, okay.
Dusty, could you repeat the page numbers?
Yeah, sixty-three and sixty-four of the agenda packet.
Okay.
Okay. They're not showing up. Okay, so anyway, Quail Hollow two, and then there's a replat B of that. Quail Hollow two has forty-four lots in this subdivision, forty of which have been built on in the packet. Yeah, there you can see. So that's replat B right there. The three lots in the bottom are the only three vacant lots remaining in that subdivision. And then if you scroll to the next page down, there is one lot left right there. So there's only four remaining lots in this subdivision. This lot currently is one that we have been attempting to get a permit on to build a residence since July of this year. The next block over, one down from the top at thirteen fifteen Santiago, we received a permit early this year. And that house is under construction, completing by the end of this year. We're here today to respectfully request clarification and ultimately a path forward regarding the city's decision to deny building permits within this subdivision, citing that it has not been formally accepted. At this point, the developer has sold every single lot in this subdivision and has no skin left in the game. So now you're left with four properties that are vacant that cannot be built on, three of which my brother and I own, that we have invested in block walls. We've submitted, been approved, installed water meters, and are currently being charged our water meter service fee on three lots, and still the inability to build on these lots to recoup our cost. Quail Hollow two was completed approximately four to six years ago. Utilities were connected, roads were paved, and builders began construction to include French brothers and scenic builders. And then Arrowhead Investment, we've got two properties in here built. Each of these permits was approved using the same residential checklist that you can pick up at the front desk. The very first item on this checklist states item number one, and it requires you to check the box or initial stating, "The lot is in an approved and accepted subdivision." So that box is checked, and the previous forty residences have been signed off and approved by the city and issued state permits to build their properties. However, when Arrowhead Investment Group recently applied for a permit on one of the remaining lots, we were informed that the subdivision has not been officially accepted. And that no further permits will be issued until certain punch list items were completed by the original developer. City staff did go out and do a walk, and they did a punch list, and they gave it to the developer. And this, there's a couple items we neglected to or forgot to submit that punch list. We've got a paper copy of it from the developer when we met him on site. And so, moving on to the punch list items, we didn't submit a copy. The CO, the city met with the developer to show them the deficiencies that need to be corrected. And we believe there are several items that are kind of inaccurately noted or misapplied based on the city's tech standards. The main issue is drainage, and I know that's been ongoing with the city for a few years in that development. So that's one that we have not seen any corrections on. The others, and this is just for reference so we could put it on record. Item number two on the punch list asks for a sidewalk connection between Acateo. So running east and west on Acateo, there's an asphalt, there's an asphalt walkpath, and there's a dirt area between the last residents in that subdivision. Well, there's a, there's probably a twelve to eighteen inch gap of dirt. And the city asked them to pour concrete to tie that in with the city walkpath. The objection with that is that is outside of the property pins of that property owner, so it's not in their property to pour concrete on. So it should be in city easement, city right-of-way, and not the developer's responsibility. Item number three is fire hydrant across from, across the street from that highlighted lot right there that's too high, and we agree that is too high. After that was installed here in the last year or so, the city went over and dug up a leak and repaired it on that fire hydrant. The asphalt was patched, the concrete was demoed and patched, and I believe if this was an issue that was still on the books, it should have been corrected that time when we tore the, when the city tore the asphalt and the concrete out and spent the time and effort to fix that. Moving on to item number six, fire hydrant is eighteen inches too high. If you look at these fire hydrants in this subdivision, they're set higher because the property slope from the curb, because they have to be higher than the floodplain. This one would have been in that proper grade, but after the home was built and the homeowners did the landscaping, they cut it out, leveled with the sidewalk to put a flagpole in there, and so now that hydrant does stick out of the ground. But at the time of construction, I don't think it would have been outside the three to six inch deal. Item number seven, referenced valve collars need to be fixed. That's all it said on the punch list. Valve collars need to be fixed. No specific deficiencies were listed or been cited. The collars were poured the proper size, the water line size and direction is etched in the concrete per CO, City of Alamo Gordo tech standard. And they were poured four to five years ago. I don't know how long you can hold that against someone. Item number ten, sidewalk ADA compliance. The sidewalk was poured, again, four or five years ago, and at the time, should have been inspected by city personnel. And then I guess there was no record of that being inspected or anything at that time. Moving on to item eleven and thirteen, and these are all just so they're on the record so that, you know, you guys have our objections to them, which it's not my corrections. It would be the developer. Item eleven and thirteen, reference fire hydrants too high. If you reference tech standard, Article oh-nine, oh-two, oh-eight B, it states extensions will be used when required to bring the bottom of the break-off flange three to six inches above surrounding finish grade. These two hydrants at thirteen forty-five Santiago and thirteen oh-nine San Carlos are in gravel landscape and a yard, and they are within that three to six inch range. And you can reference the pictures that the city put in their punch list. So those should be within code of that three to six. So those ones should be scratched from there also. In summary, these items should have been resolved during final inspection according to the subdivision standard prior to the sale of any lots or issuance of any building permits. The city, since Phase Two was built, has issued forty, allowed forty homes to be built and permitted as of today. We got some, our questions, I guess, moving forward would be when this subdivision was built, and there's a couple others, I think, having some issues in town as well. Were there city inspectors present during subdivision construction, and do we have records of that? Or is there a path moving forward to better the records of that so that we don't have these issues moving forward? Because currently, I think there's two or three subdivisions in town having issues with noncompliance on the city side, or what the city is seeing noncompliance by the developer. You know, we do have questions why there were forty permits done. I know there was an agreement signed with the developers supposedly in April. This developer that we're, that we purchased our properties from could not provide us a copy. They didn't recollect, so that may be something we have to.
That's not true.
Yeah, so, but anyway, we can look at that or whatever later. Another question would be, you know, are the existing homes connected to city utilities and the city billing for those services? And if so, how's that managed without formal acceptance? If the city has not accepted this subdivision, how are we able to properly sell those services? The water sewer, use the fire hydrants in the subdivision, and some of that. I promise, I'm almost done. Let's see. Until recently, permit issues have affected multiple subdivisions, and we would like to ask how the city is going to encourage future development and ensure developers and builders aren't burdened with this unresolved issue, you know, four, five, six years down the road. And then what assurances can be provided to property owners that similar situations won't arise elsewhere in, within the city? We acknowledge that certain obligations may remain with the original developer. However, lot owners, not the developer, have no control over these items. Enforcement should be directed toward the developer's financial guarantee or bonding, which I believe is a requirement in the subdivision ordinance. I believe the city is supposed to pull, hold a bond on them. So that if the developer doesn't follow through with their, with all of their, you know, subdivision requirements, I believe the city can go back and make those repairs and go against their bond and get paid back for those, those to complete that project. Let's see. Restricting permits penalizes the landowners who had no role in the subdivision's construction or bonding, and this undermines the investor confidence and discourages future development. We respectfully ask the commission to take some of these items into consideration when moving forward with subdivisions. Review city's prior actions and determine whether continued permit denial aligns with past practices. Encourage planning and zoning to release permits for the remaining lots while outstanding items are addressed directly with the developer. And we acknowledge that holding property owners accountable for developer compliance creates uncertainty and discourages investment within these subdivisions. And then lastly, and I think this has been asked before, if planning and zoning would compile a list of all the other subdivisions in the town that are not, not accepted, and make sure that those are either brought up or somehow moved forward so that the other subdividers or developers or builders aren't having these issues and being held up. So in closing, we're simply asking for consistent treatment under the same subdivision standards that apply to the first forty homes. A cooperative resolution is possible, and one that respects both city's responsibilities and the rights of the property owners working to build homes and contribute to Alamo Gordo's growth. That's all that I have at this time, and we're here if you guys have any questions of us on our, our issues.
So it is my understanding that there was a meeting with the developers?
There was.
And one of the developers, upon leaving the meeting, actually made the comment, "Well, it looks like I need to refund them their money."
And we.
And so I find it interesting that they're telling you now that they know nothing about it, because I believe that that's categorically false.
Sure.
That they knew that they needed to fix these problems and that they didn't bother to say anything. I mean, I could be wrong, but that's what I was told more than once, that, that they knew there was a problem and that they made the comment that they needed to refund you your money. That's, and it's also my understanding that the only thing the city is really asking for before moving forward, they need it all done, but my understanding is the only thing they're asking to be fixed before they can issue the permit is the drainage. Is that?
Yes, Mayor.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that was, you know, we are still working and trying to enter into negotiations and discussions with the developer. But that was the heart of the city's position, was that the drainage was the major concern on the city's part.
And understandably so.
Right, and understandably so. So I, while I appreciate that there's a whole punch list,
the only thing that I understand that really needs to be addressed is the drainage. And so, I mean, it all needs to be addressed.
Sure.
But that needs to be addressed before they can move forward. I'll just tell you, for me, I feel like I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place because of who you are. This is difficult for me.
Yeah.
I will also tell you that in the last five years, you were actually sitting right there.
Correct.
So I understand that you're asking me that, but part of it, I feel like, is a rhetorical question, because I think you probably know the answer to some of it. And while that may blur a line, it's a simple fact, right? And, but, and I understand the position you're in. I do. And I, I don't disagree that there has been inconsistency in the past. My question is, when does that stop and we start getting consistent as a city? And it's unfortunate that this is when it stopped. It's not, it's not, they're not singling out, you know, and you mentioned other subdivisions. And I happen to know that lots of permits have been issued recently in other subdivisions. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that's true, so.
Belavista had a holdup this week, and they just got one released last week.
Okay, but that's one, but there are lots of permits that have been issued. So if it's held up, it's held up, I'm assuming for a specific reason. And I, you know, I, listen, in the last year, I've really tried to learn construction. I think I'm doing better at it. But I can't speak to everything, but I do, I do absolutely understand this issue because it has affected, quite honestly, professionally and personally, obviously. And I'm frustrated about it, too, but, but I do have to look at this from the city's standpoint. And when we have people that say, you know, we have a legal team that says, "You absolutely cannot let anybody build until these things are addressed," that's where we stand, and we have to follow that. And so, so I understand now, and I will tell you this, and I just, I want to mention this, especially about the drainage. And I, I do see some irony in this, because I have an email here that, from a property owner who says that his neighbor is, his neighbor's property wasn't built upright or something, and, and it's draining into his property.
That was, that was, that's a completely separate deal, and it's not even a subdivision development.
And I understand that. I understand.
Can we get back real quick? I'm just going to interrupt and say we need to address the issue, though, because.
Right, and I under.
But I'd like to know right now, I'm going to ask a very straightforward question. How long, is this one more month? Is this one more year or five years? How much are we going to be denied?
And that is.
How much are we going to face financial loss, undue hardship, the things that are going to create a much bigger issue than where we're at right now, especially when there's inconsistencies? There are ongoing homes.
I think the.
Right now, and we are going to be out.
I, I think the issue, I think the issue is, is that the city is wrong. This should have been inspected. They should have records of inspections, and they should have all of this inspected and approved before they even allow asphalt to be put down on the street. And this happened five or six years ago, and it was not done. It was not done properly, and now here we are in this spot where we're at the tail end of this thing. The developer has no skin in the game. He's sold, the city has allowed him to move forward, and he's sold every single lot in the subdivision. He's got everything paid for, and he's got no skin in the game, so he's in no rush. And Mike Drunzer's eighty-plus years old, and he, he can't remember what he, the poor gentleman can't remember what he did yesterday. I'm a friend of his. He doesn't recollect anything about an agreement, like I said, but.
So what is our solution? Because.
Where do we stand as of right now?
Because I don't, I don't see a solution.
I don't think we're going to get any resolve from the developers.
I don't, I don't see a solution other than he needs to fix the drainage. So what is our solution?
I have some comments on this.
Okay, can, can I just hear what the solution is?
I want to know when we had a legal opinion saying that we're not allowed to issue permits when we've already issued permits to seventy-five percent of the thing. We've already shot ourselves in the foot when we've done that.
We were issued a permit earlier this year. We were issued a permit earlier this year.
Exactly. And, and I know of numerous homes over there that were issued permits.
Well, I meant him. I meant Daryl.
Well, I don't remember staff ever telling us that we weren't allowed to. When this issue came up, when the new tech standards were implemented, I made a comment that we need to allow all of the existing subdivisions to follow the former tech standards till they were completed. We have three or four, and they have one street left. And now we're in this pickle right here, where this subdivision has two, Bella Vista has one street and a street that had two lots. We were holding a permit up on one of those over some drainage issues that I personally walked with the developer three years ago. Staff could not produce any records that anything was ever done. So it's not the developer's fault on this, essentially. Staff hasn't been doing their portion of it, and these guys shouldn't be held up because of the shortcomings of the city on this part. You know, when this all passed two or three years ago, I don't know how long it goes, we did the tech standards. Been three years?
Twenty-two, maybe?
You know, we knew this was going to be an issue, and, and, you know, I just, it, it kind of irritates me that five years after the fact that you're going to go in there and say, "Hey, this isn't correct," or "This isn't correct," you know? It's like, guys, it, it is what it is. Let's, let's get it taken care of, and let's move forward, and from this day forward, any new subdivision has to follow the rules.
And let me just say this. I don't disagree with that.
Sure.
I don't. The problem is, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
No, it's the rules in the middle of the game.
I think, I think another, another source subject to this is the city allowed us just in July to apply for water services for those properties. They approved them. We installed our setters. We got them inspected. The city installed meters finally in October, because they were missing, they didn't have meters installed, and started sending us our water bills. If we weren't allowing permits, we shouldn't allow city, we shouldn't allow water meters, we shouldn't allow nothing.
Can you, yes, can you interject, please? That's what I really wanted.
Gladly. So as far as, you mean, you know, and not to try and pass the buck, I can't speak for what the previous city attorney or city attorneys did, what they advised, or how they advised the city on how to proceed in certain matters. What I have right in front of me is how to uniformly and fairly try and protect the city from, from third-party scrutiny, basically, from, from a judge, from, from any type of regulatory agency. And so at, at this...
That brings up a question. Did the city have a bond on the developer, like their ordinance requires?
So that one, I, I would, no.
Okay. So the city should have had a bond on this, and had he not finished his punch list of requirements, the city could have repaired those or hired a contractor to repair it and go against the bond, because that's how construction works.
In accordance with your own city code, it specifically states there's a subdivision approval process, which would require the developer to provide a financial guarantee and a bond. Should the developer not complete everything that they have been mandated to complete in accordance with city tech standards, the city would then go after the developer's bond to rectify any shortcomings. So that would be between the city and the developer. A third-party landowner has no legal obligation to rectify any of these issues. So for you to hold a permit back on us, you're misplacing your, your avenues of reconciliation with the developer. We have no legal obligation to ensure that the developer does anything according to your standards. We're a third-party lot owner, so according to your own approval process, until you've accepted that subdivision, you're supposed to hold that bond. So if you guys didn't hold that bond, then it's on the city. It's not on us, it's not on the developer. That's a city issue.
Can you guys speak to that?
Do you have a response?
No, no, no. So, so on the one hand, nowhere, anywhere in the United States, if there's noncompliance by a government entity in the past, that does not create a precedent to continue with noncompliance once that's been discovered. That, that just can't happen. Be like, well, we didn't follow the rules in the past, does, so we've created a precedent, we're not going to follow them now. That's, that's just not how it works. So while, while I fully agree that things were not done correctly in the past, that does not address where we're at currently. And so when it comes to the situation that unfortunately the four, four lots are finding themselves in right now, is we've, at least from my understanding, is we found where there was noncompliance, we're now enfor, who, that we are now enforcing compliance across the board, and so that's kind of where we're at right now. Now, you guys are getting the short end of the stick, or feel that you're getting the short end of the stick, because you guys purchased those lots from the developers and, and had...
It's based on city precedent of issuing 40 permits out of 44. Had we not...
So, so, but I guess, in, in, in this, see, this is a conversation that I think we could have together.
We've tried.
But it's been since July, and we just keep getting pushed and ran around.
My apologies to interrupt. Anybody speaking at the podium, can you speak into the mic, please? And also identify your name, please?
Troy Wright. And the only thing we're trying to get to deal is, at some point, you guys got to understand, we've got to side of this, that there is a lot of money, there's a lot of time, there's a lot of resources, there's contractors involved. I mean, this is becoming, every single day this goes on, this is a bigger problem.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know where they have to address that, you know, appropriately. You guys can tell me.
No, and, and I think, I think it is a larger issue.
As much as you spoke to the unfair, unjust lot stuff, again, we're a third party. We're not the developer, we're not the city. I mean, there's so much, I know you said precedents can't be set, but then the city, I mean, there was lack of stuff that didn't happen as far as record-keeping, other stuff on that end too, that there's a lot of stuff that took place. And again, you're, you're financially punishing these people, you're withholding them, I mean, so these people are, and I mean, we happen to be the people standing in front of you tonight, but that could be any one of hundreds or thousands of people in Alamo Gordo right now, that, that's not who can afford to take this hit because of malfeasance and lack of stuff on other parties that were not involved, and it just, it just can't happen.
So I have a question, just a quick question. I understand that you're saying it wasn't enforced, but was it on the books? Should it have been, should these things have been done?
So from the...
Or is this, do you, do you see what I'm saying? Like, is this, what, the other 40 permits that were issued, did Mr. Drunzer know with those other 40 permits about the drainage issues? Was that, was it on the original plans? Was it...
From my understanding, the drainage has always been a, a, a hard...
And was it on the, does anybody know? Does anybody know if it was on the original plans? So the original plans, when this subdivision was built, said that he had to do X, Y, and Z, and he didn't do it.
And there's, I'm sorry.
No, come up here. Shelby, go ahead and go to the podium.
There aren't even letters dated in, I believe, 2018, 2021, and 2022, letters addressed to Mr. Drunzer, again, addressing the deficits in that subdivision. Mr. Drunzer did sign a new subdividers agreement April of this year.
Yeah. So I guess...
So again, they're aware of the deficits and...
Right. And I understand, I get it. It's money, I get all of that. But here's the thing, we're, everybody wants to like, come after the city, and I'm like, and you're telling me, well, he's 80 years old and he doesn't remember. Well, that, I mean, he wasn't 80 years old like 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, or whenever it was built.
But why were the other 40 permits given then?
So, and with that being said, sorry, my name is Sarah Wright, but with that being said, we were provided a copy of that letter that was provided to Mr. Drunzer in 2022. In 2022, he was written basically a cease and desist. The city wrote Mr. Drunzer saying, "Until you rectify these deficiencies, no more permits will be issued in Quail Hollow number two."
And then they were issued.
And then they were continued to be issued until, until July of this year. So that's where the city is negligent in their inability to be consistent with their permitting process. That's where our problem lies, because we purchased these, the last two lots that we did in...
When did you purchase those?
In June of this year, because, again, longstanding...
So, okay, okay, hang on, hang on one second, hang on. So in June...
The one we're waiting on a permit for, we purchased in 2020.
Okay, but in, in June of this year, you purchased two lots, right?
Yes.
Okay. When was the letter to Mr. Drunzer, the, the one this year? Wasn't it like April or something of this year?
April 23rd.
I believe he signed the new subcontractor in April.
In April. So in April of this year, he signed a new subcontractor agreement, and he agreed to fix all of this stuff. Hang on, just one second. He agreed to fix all of this stuff, and then turned around and sold you the lots anyway and neglected to tell you, oh, by the way...
We didn't buy the lots directly from Mr. Drunzer.
What's that?
We didn't buy them from Mr. Drunzer.
Well, you bought them from one of his business partners.
Yeah.
Did his business partner sign the letter? Was he aware of it back in April?
He said no.
I'm not, I'm not laying blame on you. I don't disagree with you. I would be frustrated too. I'm frustrated. I've been frustrated with this for years. It's not, I think we, I think you know that I've been frustrated with this for years. The problem is that I'm equally frustrated that in April of this year, somebody in the city finally says, "Listen, we've got to be consistent. We have not been consistent, but we have to be consistent, and this is it." And then after that, you were sold two lots. After, after the letter, after, hey, we've got a punch list, after, yes, I understand and acknowledge that I have to fix these, he sold you two lots, and now, and, but, but do you see what I'm saying? I mean, I don't, I don't know what you call that, but I call it misleading at best, so...
And that is an issue to be taken care of, but that's actually quite a bit separate of an issue from what's going on right now. The other lot was bought, gosh, in what, 2020?
2020.
That's the one that we're trying to apply a permit, that's the one that was, that was done, so go back to 2020, we applied permits, and that's one again, and it still boils down, even though those are issues, and those might need to be taken up with a different person, different time, again, there's been 40 of 44 lots while this has been addressed three times. So this has been a continual habitual redundant process that has been broken, and, and it continues to happen, and then all of a sudden, now you choose to do that at this time to us in this deal.
But they didn't do it to you.
Well, I...
They didn't, but in fairness, they didn't do it to you.
To the person that owns this lot, that's fine, I'm good with that, but the bottom line is...
To a private party, not the developer.
To a private party, and that's what I mean to say.
That's the main content.
How many permits have been issued in Quail Hollow since that letter went out in April?
Zero.
None?
Because we own three of the last four remaining lots.
Okay. Because I know there was one on the corner across, across from you, your other house over there.
There's one in Quail Hollow 1.
That's the one we're trying to make a permit on right now.
No, no, not the other direction, to the, to the east.
James Hump built on it.
Yeah. That one was done in January.
And that one's been done for the...
So, that's where I have the issue here, guys. We've already shot ourselves in the foot. We've already issued permits. That, in my mind, says we've accepted the subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
You know, especially when you're 95% built out.
And something we've always, just one last thing to put in there that we've always understood, is the second you guys decide to start accepting fees and money for the subdivision...
It's yours.
It, it's yours. You bought it. I mean, it's, it's a done deal, it's the city's. I mean, the city has already been over there on multiple repairs and fixes, so that tells us, it's the city's.
So they fixed that fire hydrant that is on your punch list of things to rectify, you guys fixed it, so therefore it would be yours.
They've even fixed water meter leaks in that area, so in every way, you guys have stepped over bounds, other than now you want to come in and go, "Wait, I'm going to do it right." Why are this private party the beneficiaries of that decision? And we just don't think it's right, and we think it needs to be resolved, and it needs to be addressed, and that's how you guys get this done.
What are, what are your curiosity? I'm sorry, just out of curiosity, when are you going to build on the other lots?
We have plans with our contractor already.
Yep.
We have, that, that's the problem. We had plans to have the one that we were denied at La Cordera, on La Cordera, and use, the one that was highlighted on the corner.
Have you talked to Mr. Drunzer about this?
We have.
And his counsel?
When is he planning on doing the drainage?
I'm sorry. I don't...
I'm sorry.
They haven't referenced anything on that, so...
They have no set plans, that we know of.
But he signed in agreement saying that he would, and so, and I know that there's like, three partners, right? Isn't there three partners for that subdivision?
I don't think that matters. We need to figure out a way to move forward.
Really, at this point, that, even that's not for us to approach him and say, hey, you have to do this, that's a city and a...
No, no, no. I, okay, there was a point to that, and the point is that the only thing that the city is really wanting fixed, and, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but the only thing the city is really wanting fixed before they'll move forward is the drainage, right?
Correct.
So yes, there, it is relevant, because I'm just curious, how hard, I mean, is it that difficult? Like, I don't understand.
Is this drainage, is it where it crosses Ocatillo?
So there's the cross of Ocatillo, but then it's on the, the east side of, I don't know what that street name is.
The berm in the back?
So on the east side of the property, there, there's like, a little bit of a drainage ditch through there, and there actually is a culvert that goes across Ocatillo into that main drainage ditch.
Into the main one on the, on the south side of Ocatillo.
I don't know what, what the requirement was, if he was supposed to clean that existing ditch out or what.
Yeah, what is the request? What is the problem with the drainage currently?
He needs to create a drainage channel.
Yeah, it's, it's the actual drainage channel.
Shelby, if you're going to speak, can you speak into the podium, the microphone?
Yeah, there's...
And your name and title as well, thank you.
Shelby Abbott, Assistant City Planner. So again...
Don't say that with such enthusiasm, I can't stand it.
I'm a little bit nervous. So again, it's, it's a drainage channel, there's no channel there. He needs to create that channel on the east, on the east side of...
Is this the same kind of an issue we had with the subdivision to the south side? It seems like everybody needs to create a drainage channel, but when they start developing that upper section, I mean, they're going to change that. You know what I mean? Why do you want to ditch in between these subdivisions? You know, I don't know, I haven't seen any of the original plats when these things were cut in. I, I don't know any of the details, but it seems like we have the same issue with every single subdivision in Alamo Gordo. And the only places that I've seen in Alamo when it rains that don't flood are these three places that we're talking about. Everywhere else floods, so, but I just, we've been talking about this for three years. I know for a fact that over in Quail Hollow, three years ago, we talked about this exact same thing, and here we are, the city still hasn't ever, you know, that's where I have the issue here, and that's why I said we kind of need to draw the line in the sand, allow the developers that are really close to being done with their subdivisions to just, hey, we're going to fudge the rules a little here or there, get them completed, and then from that day forward, everybody has to stick to the procedure and the rules. I said that three years ago when we did the tech standards.
And so that is, that is what staff is trying to do. So draw a line in the sand is exactly the wording that I was going to use. But at some point, the line in the sand has to be there, because I, in, you know, in all respect to the rights, unfortunately, they're the ones that got abutted up to the line in the sand in this situation.
The line in the sand should be...
So we move that line in the sand back, then we start getting another person abutted to another person abutted to. We are trying to fix this situation, there's no question. As the rights were told earlier this week, we have a consultant that's coming in, I'll talk more about that in the city manager's report. We, we know that there's issues, and we are trying to fix those, and that's where this line in the sand comes from, is from our attorneys, from the self-insurance, and from multiple people saying, "Hey, at some point, you have to stop doing this. If we keep moving that line in the sand back and trying to fit everybody in it, it's, it's going to get muddied again, like it has been." it's, it's going to get muddied again, like it has been.
In this particular subdivision, there's four lots left, and you guys own three of them? So the line in the sand should be when those are built. That should be the line in the sand, and we get past it.
Is the fourth lot sold?
Is the fourth lot is owned?
Yes, same thing with the, with the, I think it's Bella Vista out there. Is it, is that one Bella Vista? Bella Vista out there. We, we have twenty-two lots left.
My understanding is Bella Vista complied with what they were given.
Yes.
Phase five, they still have phase six.
Phase six is the other twenty, right? Phase five is the two lots. There, again, it's the same issue. We have an entire street, there's twenty, twenty-seven lots, twenty-five of them are built on, two are vacant. We're holding a permit up on one lot in a street that is seventy, is ninety-five percent built out. Do we not see the issue there? You know?
But again, if we move that for that one house, then do we move it for the next street? Then do we move it for somebody else's street?
I personally, yeah.
At some point, we've got to find it, and we've got to draw it, and we have to live with it. And it's going to hurt, it's, it's going to hurt the city, it's going to hurt us, it's going to hurt everybody.
It's, it's hurting.
But at some point, we've got to draw it, and we've got to stick with it.
It's, it's hurting these guys, and it's setting us up for a lawsuit because of the way that it has been done.
Well, I think it's setting us up for a lawsuit either way.
It's setting us up for a lawsuit.
Well, our issue isn't with your line in the sand. Our issue is with your line in the sand with somebody that you're picking the fight with the wrong person. Your fight should be with the developer, not with us. So you can, like I said, if you guys would have done according to your own code properly and held a bond on this land, then you could have gone after the developer's bond.
And, and I agree, I have no argument against that. I, trust me, I sit in meetings every week and, and have the same argument. We have no argument against that.
With reference to the channel, I don't know what your definition of a channel is, because we walked that when they provided us with the punch list, and there was an excavated portion that was dug out prior to the culvert that goes under Ocatillo. Now granted, that was five-plus years ago, there's been a whole lot of rain since then.
Yeah, they're referencing a channel right here, and there's a portion right here that's dug up, but not across the whole back of those lots.
Right, so, I mean, a lot of.
What would it take to get that channel done?
I mean, it could cost the developer, I, don't quote me on this, but I mean, you might be looking at twenty to fifty thousand dollars in dirt work. It could be, depending on what the spec of the channel is, and if it was, if it was in the plans, and if it was shown to be concrete, or if it's just a dirt channel, or.
And it, it also might be another issue of, he may not own the property that it needs to be built on, which is a similar situation across the street.
We, we checked on that, and he does have the easement, so he, he has the ability, yeah, he's granted that easement, so he has the ability to build that channel.
And part of the issue here, and I happen to know Mr. Drunzer, he's like the grandfather of the building community around here. He is slipping, and so, he may not remember that he signed an agreement with you guys, or, and I don't know if he has a power attorney or anybody that helps him.
His two partners aren't aware of the agreement, what they told us.
Okay.
That I don't know.
They said they weren't aware?
They said they didn't sign no agreements.
They were literally in the meeting, were they not?
In the punch list meeting.
So in the punch list meeting, yes.
But they weren't aware, they said they weren't aware of the agreement from April.
Is that true? Weren't they in the meeting, or no?
No, they, they were, they were in the meeting with, the punch list meeting.
Yes, but they're talking about the letter that was signed in April, that they weren't, they said they weren't aware of it. I don't know, I don't, I don't know them that great, but that's what they told, because I met them on site once they received their punch list items.
Okay, so what if we, I don't think we're going to get anything resolved in this meeting.
We can't take any action.
And we can't take any action.
This was just to bring our issues in front of commission.
However, however, I would say, and I would encourage you to work with them. I, I mean, I can't even remember three years ago, who was the city manager? Was it Brian, was it Rick?
It was Brian when all this started.
It was Brian.
Correct.
So we've had Brian, we've had Rick, we've had Stephanie twice. I, I'm not making excuses, but I think you and I both know that we've had just a little bit of staff turnover. We've had a, a different public works director since then, and she's gone, and now we have somebody else, and I'm confused, and everybody's confused, and I'm not making an excuse, but the facts are the facts, and the facts are, things did fall through the cracks, of course they did. But, you know, a lot of that was staff turnover and inconsistency. And, and I have to tell you that, that I hear things around town, and I get frustrated because contractors literally make comments that, I used to be able to walk in City Hall, and I'd get a slide, and they'd give me a pass, and, and blah, 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 and, and I can't do that anymore, and I can't wait till the election, so I can do that again, and, I mean, it, no, but.
Contractors aren't like that.
You can.
Hold on a second, my point.
I guarantee you, that has never come out of Troy or our dad's mouth.
I, I am not saying it did, I'm saying that, my point is, those things did happen in the past, they did. Of course they did. I mean, the con, my point is, even the contractors admit that it did, and I understand the city, listen, if it were me, okay, whatever, if it were me, I'd be like, just let them build the darn lots and be done with it. But I, we have, we.
In defense of the builders, we're liable for whatever we build for up to nine years after we, after we build it. Why would we cut corners? Why would we want to do favors? Why, you know what I mean?
Granada Hills.
This is way off topic.
I was going to say, I, I, no, I think, I think to the frustrations that Commissioner Reardon you brought up, that several of you brought up, like, they're, they are all, and of course, as the presenters, they're valid. And so I think that's why, you know, the city is, is working our best to try and resolve as quickly as possible, you know, and, and again, I, I understand, you know, the attorney of me doesn't like the "we'll cut corners" phrase, so I'll rephrase, I know, I know, I know.
It's not cutting corners, it's, it's.
But like, for example, that's why we are focusing mainly on, on the drainage aspect at this point, because there is a, this is the ability and the time for the city and for the developers, whether it be yourself or someone across the city in Bella Vista, or, you know, with any number of the subdivisions that we have currently. This is the time where we can start coming together to correct things that had happened in the past, so that way we can get to that, that new breakaway point that you, you referred to. And so from the presentation, from the direction, you know, I, I can't answer, I don't know, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, boss.
Troy, I'm sorry.
Troy. I can't give you a definitive, "Hey, man, this is going to happen next week." Because I mean, since that meeting, we've been trying to get in touch with the developers, and we have not been able to get any, hold of any of the three. So we're trying to get that through as fast as we can, because we do know that this is financially burdening other people, not just, you know, a beef between the developer and the city. So, I mean, we are more than, at least, I, I can say, you know, as the legal office of the city, we, we are more than happy to work with any of the developers, whether it's, it's the rights or, or somebody else, so that we can quickly remedy this, and, and hopefully stop any financial bleeding that's happening.
I just, I don't like the fact that we're holding the, the end user hostage, essentially, because of our shortcomings, you know, like I say, this isn't a new issue. This, this subdivision and the other one, this has been over three years. And we're holding them hostage because we can't get the developer to comply, and it's iffy, you know what I mean? I haven't seen any of the plans, I don't know exactly what they were supposed to do. I've walked it with them on one of their subdivisions, but not the other. So that's where I have the issue here.
No, and I think it's a hundred percent valid issue, genuinely do.
And, and our business, time is money, you know what I mean? The longer you hold them up, the more money they lose. They probably have a, a note at the bank that's, that's accruing interest. You know, they're trying to get their properties built so they can get them rented and start generating revenue, and when we do this, that's the builder's biggest gripe with the city. It doesn't matter if it takes us twenty days to do a plan review, or ten days, or however long. We just need to know how long it will be, and then we can set our schedules up from that point, so.
Right.
Hey, Darryl, can you give us a next step? What's the next step?
So at least for us right now, the next step with us is getting in touch with the developer to kind of get that timeline of when can the drainage issue be done? Because as, as mentioned, there was a punch list of items that would need to be corrected for, you know, for full acceptance, or to come into compliance with our technical standards. But we do understand, again, the situation where in the past administrations, houses were allowed to be built. And so now that we're, you know, kind of drawing that line of, okay, we are going to comply with ordinances, the big one for us and for the safety of the citizens is that drainage. And so that, that, once that kind of gets agreed upon and a plan moved, as with some of the other developments, that's when then, you know, we can start greenlighting those plans, so that way they're no, you guys are no longer held up in, in this kind of limbo of administration.
And just to note, to this date, there's been zero floods in Quell Hollow two, or Quell Hollow one.
And Dusty, could you and Troy and Sarah maybe make an effort to try to get ahold of the developer to connect them with the city, so we can make this a priority? And if they can assist you in getting in contact?
We've attempted, we did meet them on site when they received their punch list.
Let's sit down and make it a priority to meet in person and get a resolution.
Who's the other two partners in that?
Paul Jackson and Steve Whiteside.
Okay.
And then I guess also, on that note, the, that brings up the water meter issue of, the city allowed us to put water meters in, and we're getting billed monthly. We asked that question, and we were told we could have the city go pull those, and when we're ready to build and this gets cleared up, then we can pay to have them reinstalled. But I don't think that's something we're willing to do, pay for months, pay our monthly bill.
I think Stephanie addressed that, though.
Yeah, she was still getting some more information, but she offered us an option to, for the city to come pull our meters, and then we'll have to pay to have them reinstalled later.
With a full, with a full refund. We, because we are a hundred percent saying, "No, you should not have been allowed to have meters there." I will a hundred percent say that was an error. If you, if the lots are not being able to be used for development, then no, you should not have been able to get a water meter. That is a failure in communication between the two departments that I will a hundred percent own. So the options are to have those meters pulled, you get a full refund. That way you are a hundred percent whole for the money that you've already paid for not having those. We're not very comfortable leaving them in the ground and, and giving you that refund. We would like to re, to reset the whole thing and give you that refund. Or the option was to leave them in the ground, terminate your accounts, as everybody in the city has the right to do, to turn off those accounts, so you're not paying the monthly bill on them. In reference to the question about the time in between when we were able to get the meters and when they were being installed, yes, I completely agree, you should have a credit back to the date that the meter can was inspected and passed, and the difference in between that time and when the meters were there. So that is, and then I have some more details on some more technicality stuff with the, with the billing and stuff, which I don't think anybody particularly wants to hear right now. But we will, we'll get an email to you guys tomorrow with the technicality of that stuff. But, so those are the options that, that we've presented, with, again, the full, full agreement that, no, you should not have been issued those meters, and so that we wouldn't have had to issue you a full refund.
Like I said, this was a whole presentation just to bring all these issues to light, so that commission, because we've been emailing back and forth with, with the city management and directors and stuff, just so that all the commissioners were aware of these situations that others are dealing with also. So thank you guys for your time.
I appreciate it, Dusty.
I want to say that was a very good presentation.
What's that?
It was a very good presentation that you made.
Appreciate that.
Got one more quick question for staff.
If we could, I'm not done yet. If we could put this on a priority list, this is causing a lot of angst everywhere. And if you have to take legal action against somebody, it, it's time to do that. So as a commissioner, I'd like to see it prioritized.
I feel like it's been pretty prioritized lately, but.
I think they're just, we're just waiting for the developers to get with us. I think we need to go find them and get this taken care of.
Can I ask my question? Okay, how many subdivisions do we currently have right now that aren't technically accepted?
No.
At the top of, on the, off the top of my head, it's either five or six.
Okay, which ones are there? It'd be Quell Hollow, Bella Vista.
Canyon Park.
Where's Canyon Park?
Oh, gosh, it's over there in that area also. It's like, it's.
It's over by the German school?
It's to the south of, no, Hermosa El Sol, I believe.
Okay, which, yeah, we would have Hermosa and, what's the other one that Doug has? There's Hermosa and.
Let me see, Canyon Park is Teresa Hamm, Bella Vista.
Canyon Park's the one over here, right off of Washington, right over here, right? Okay. Okay, could you all compile a list, we don't need it tonight, but.
I have, I have.
Get us, get us a list of how many unfinished subdivisions we have? How many lots are still available in those, and what phase they're in?
We have, I have all of that.
Do you have all that?
I have, and, and, and again, I have four, five new subdividers contracts, because these subdivisions started in two thousand and five. Per ordinance, they should be completed in five years.
And I think that's part of the problem, yeah.
It's the nature of, of real estate and building, and, you know, when it's booming, so when you're not, you're not.
I know, but it's still twenty years ago, regardless.
But I do, I do have a list, I can get that, I can get that to you.
And do you have them, like, like say, what phase they're currently in, and then.
Not if we haven't received anything new.
Okay, like, because I know, like, one of them's got a half a street built. This one has four lots left, the one out there has two on one street, and then twenty or twenty-two on the next street. Can you get that information for us?
I certainly can. You've got to give me a minute, though, because it's only me.
That's fine.
Okay.
I do remember when Brian was here, telling Brian, it was probably when I was first elected mayor, and I do remember telling Brian, "You need to figure something out," because, and it just triggered it when you said that, because these subdivisions are old, and I said to him at the time that I thought it was unfair that we were still, you know what I mean, that we were going to hold, I mean, we had a whole conversation about it, and I thought he figured something out. I remember him saying, "Well, that's why they go to them, so when they turn it down, the city manager can make the final decision." And I remember him saying that, and that was the Drunzer subdivision on Ocatillo. So, and that was, well, that was probably close to four years ago. So this is not like a new issue. I think the issue is that you guys have bought the lots since then, and two of them.
Question on prior, and that brings up another question. Canyon Park, I believe, is Hila Bandalir area.
Can you, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
And there's two vacant lots in there that we own. And so that was our next move was, this is going to be, could be a couple of years, move over there, but why would we spend the money and time if that's not accepted either?
Which one is that?
Canyon Park should be in the Bandalir area on the north side behind.
Okay, over behind Home Depot, over by Home Depot back there.
And there's two vacant lots in there that, that we own, that sounds like we're going to run into the same issue.
And honestly, has, has there been development?
Yeah, there's a bunch of houses built on Bandalir by, I can't remember his name.
Quayzar, Quayar, Quayar, Alex.
Eight or ten houses built there.
Oh, because I haven't reached, it's been years since anything was happened.
And there's only two lots that have been there vacant forever, and the guy came to us and we bought them, so it sounds like we're going to have the same issue over there, too, so.
But again, we want a resolution, we don't want to hinder progress, we, we, we don't want to.
And I think that's our problem, is as we move to, so if this gets jammed up, which it's probably going to be a couple of years, our next move is over there. We've got plans being worked on for that lot over there, but if you're saying Canyon Park's not accepted either, then we're stopped again on another property that has a lot of meters.
That's where the problem's going to come in, right there. Yes, sir.
I have one question for Darryl, excuse my voice. Darryl, I have a what-if scenario. If, 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 what happens if the developer, if something happens to him? He dies, or whatever, and that ever gets resolved? How does it get resolved at, at that point?
So I mean, there, there are a lot of different legal mechanisms that can do that. I mean, the fact that he has a partnership, so the company would still be liable to do that. I mean, as, as mentioned, there's two other partners there.
Well, the what-if is, if all three of them die.
Okay, so.
I mean, a plane wreck, I mean.
Law school, law school hypothetical, here we go.
What if the world ended? That would be the best we could hope for.
No, no, I mean, it's a valid question, so, so a lot of those, those, for the, the city could then make a claim against that entity, saying that, you know, hey, there's, we're owed unfinished business, so I mean, there, there's, it's, it's, it's law, so lawsuits all around, lawsuits for everybody. But I mean, there are definite, definite ways that the city could go about, or for example, the builders could also go about if they feel that they were improperly advised or advertised on the, on the plots that they were given. So I mean, there's multiple remedies for, for all different parties to try and recoup the, either damages on, on their end or restitution on our end for having to do the job for, for the developer.
Okay, so I guess the, the, the way I would answer that question is, is how do we move forward, or right now, to do, to do that? And, 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 you know, we, we're trying to work with you, and since you don't want to work with us, we're going to move forward so we can get these guys their permits, and this is your bill.
Right.
Is that, is that a possibility?
So on, on that end, I would most likely, just, just so that way everyone can be on the same page, if, if we hit a, a dead wall with any developer, not just specifically this one, where, you know, they're refusing to come to the table, or in, in your instance, they physically can't come to the table, then, you know, then that would be a discussion for, for staff and for commission on if we are going to proceed through restitution, we're going to do the job ourself and then seek restitution, or are we going to seek specific performance for breach of contract? You know, there's, there's a lot of different avenues on which, which route in court we're going to take.
That's the whole purpose of bonding them in the beginning.
Well, that's exactly, exactly.
Because if the contractor doesn't follow through, then they just file a claim on their bond, the city would do it, and then their bond would pay, and it would damage them from future projects or future developments because their.
And he's absolutely right, that, that is the purpose of that. There's also the possibility of putting, you know, liens on, on properties and stuff like that. So I mean, there are many different vehicles on how both the city and, and, and I may be using the wrong term, but not, not developer, but, but builder can, can seek recompense for any, for any loss.
Okay, I have a question, but it's going to take somebody like Dave, who's been here since the dark ages, to answer it, probably. Do we, did we know about this bonding, or, well, Evelyn has to, never mind, sorry. Do we know about this bonding thing, or? I know what a bond is, like.
I was like, I'm going to channel my inner Dave, because he says this in probably every meeting we talk about it. Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's in our ordinance, it absolutely should have been done.
So why wasn't it? And, and it's sort of a rhetorical question, but it's not. Like, if we, like, how long have, has it been since we realized we should have done it? Or how long, did we just let it slide, or I don't understand? Because to me, that's just one more layer of issue, right? Where we allowed people to get away with stuff, and now it's a liability for the city.
I think that's a long discussion into the loss of the community development department as a community development department, and when the community development department dissolved and everything kind of got splintered, planning and zoning especially got left on its, its own little island. And there were situations where it was not monitored, whether it was not monitored by a director, it was not monitored by a city manager. it was not monitored by a director, it was not monitored by a city manager. It has bounced multiple times to multiple different authorities in terms of, you know, like currently, right now, under our chart of accounts, it's under public works. Because when we set up the new chart of accounts, it was under public works. Then it was moved out from under public works to the city manager. And the city manager did that, he left three months later. We, it's just bounced around and without having that strong community development leadership that then trickles down to the planner, which trickles down to everybody, it, it's been lost. And it's kind of floated out there. And that's what we're trying desperately to pull it back, to bring in, get our processes fixed, get our ordinances fixed, get everything all the way down to our forms fixed, get our software compliant so that these people, if you want to apply for your permit at midnight, sitting on your couch, you should be able to log in and do that. And we're, we're actively working towards getting that in place too, so that we can do that. My fear, and everybody who's a city employee has heard this, my fear is that we get this all fixed and it floats off in its little bubble again. And so we're doing everything we can to make sure. We had a conversation today about community development and community development director and trying to make sure that we do all this work, we get everything solid, we, we move forward, because it's, it's gonna be painful. We know it's gonna be painful. The line in the sand's gonna be painful. The change of process is gonna be painful. But that we can move it forward and it, it continues to go and we don't end up where it's floated off and everybody forgets about those three employees until it's time to do, it's time to do turkey vouchers. And it's like, who are these people? You know, we, we have to stop doing that. And that's what we did for many, many years. And so, nobody was checking to see if anybody got bonds. Nobody was checking to see if subdivision contracts were signed. Nobody was checking to see if spot zoning was happening.
Because community development went away?
Community development went away.
And when was that? I didn't even know we ever had a community development department.
I think the last official one would have been Mark Threadgill was the last official community development director before he was made other assistant city manager. And then it just splintered.
It's, and like I say, the city needs to learn, also, I was here when all that happened. It's kind of what got me here and started in this mess. But in 2008, when the department imploded, and then the state came down here and, and made a, an example of Alumagordo, and took our department away and, and took it over to CID. The role was, we do the FEMA and zoning, they do the permitting part of it. And it's worked great. And then it just, here in the last few years, it seems like we've tried to overstep. And we need to get those lines. And there was never anything in writing between the city and the state. And we always tried, but there was never anything put in writing in MOU or anything of our role and their role. And so, that's the, the starting place, is we need to sit down and figure out what is our role and what is the state's role before we get rolling too far on that.
So, but we don't issue the permits.
We don't. FEMA and zoning is all we are supposed to do.
I think our part is to make sure they're in compliance with our ordinance.
And our subdivision.
Right.
And, and that's why we have asked our consultants that their very first thing that they are already currently working on is our subdivision ordinance. Because that is the biggest part of what we're doing at this point in time.
And it's a little ironic.
Commissioner Riordan is 100% correct.
Yeah.
We are not permit issues. And Shelby is great at every time we have a software meeting and they use the word permit, Shelby's like, we don't do the permits. She's very, very good at making sure everybody understands that. And so, yes, we, we can streamline our processes because we're not CID. But we also need to make sure that what we put in place for the subdivision ordinance, when it comes to you, when it gets published, when it goes out, is enforceable, correct, and manageable for staff and for the developers. We don't want to end up into something that's not manageable for staff, it's not manageable for the developers, and it's not enforceable. And that's what we're working towards right now, is bringing something that's actually modern, that's actually up to the correct times, what places with actual developments are doing, instead of the hodgepodge that we have now that has not been enforced.
And I, I actually think that's a great way to describe it, because we've done this hodgepodge thing. And I just, I find it ironic that we were so like, oh, you gotta follow the ordinance, you gotta follow the ordinance. And then the most important part, one of the most important parts in my opinion, which is bonding the developer, did not get followed. And I just, see, and I didn't know about that before tonight, or I don't think I did. I'm pretty sure I didn't. And, or if I did, it may have been an email or something. But that to me is a frustration, only because I'm feeling like, man, if that had happened, this would have been resolved already. We could have already taken care of this. However, I'm also gonna say, listen, we've had a lot of staff turnover. And we had somebody in, well, we have had a lot of staff turnover. And, and that's not an excuse, that's just a fact. And there's nothing we can do about it. We've had a lot of staff turnover in departments. We've had a lot of staff turnover in the city manager's seat. And, and so, I see, I see where there might have been a lack of oversight. I think there should have been more oversight in planning and zoning, to be honest with you. And I, I think we could probably all agree on that. But, but it's too late. There's nothing we can do about that, so.
The staff turnover, in my opinion, that's not their fault.
I, I'm not saying it is. I'm not saying that at all. Because if I had my way, we would just, let's just let them get it built and be done with it. But I think we all know how this works. First of all, there's seven of us. And second of all, who wants to be the one to let them override it? Because, I mean, I'm gonna be gone, it doesn't matter to me, but either way, there's gonna be a lawsuit. So, if we let them do it, there's gonna be a lawsuit. If we don't let them do it, there's gonna be a lawsuit. So, we're in a no-win situation. And I think it's just a matter of you working with them and trying to figure this out. Because they're, we're on the record here, right? So if we, if we sit here in an open meeting on the record and go, just let them override the rules now because we've done it in the past, then, I'm sorry, I don't think that looks good either, so.
Can we just put it on the agenda for the next meeting to revisit the progress that's been made? Would that be okay to just kind of revisit? Have we gotten in touch with?
Just give us an update on it.
The developer give us an update? Okay.
See, and I'm not saying bend the rules. I'm just saying you're flexible in, in your, you know, ordinance is a breathing document. It's flexible. You know, there's, there's, you know, there, there's circumstances.
I mean, you, you, you both are absolutely correct. And I mean, at the moment, right now, the city, the developers and the builders, we're in an ox in the mire kind of situation. And so that's what we're working to try and, and correct, how to, how to best do this while still being compliant with our own ordinances, but also at the same time, being able to work and, and provide that kind of support and direction, or not direction, but that support to the developers and to the builders that buy from developers.
I was really hoping he was gonna get up, come to the microphone and come up with a grand solution.
He had the grand solution.
Yeah, leaves, that's good. All right.
I, I promise you, a lot of the things we've talked about are mostly Nunley's grand solutions.
Yeah. I just.
He just doesn't like to talk.
I would like to get this resolved. I don't like it any more than anybody else does. I'm, I just feel like we're in a no-win, we're, it's, it's, you know, the story in the Bible about the, 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 the sons being punished for the.
The sins of the fathers.
The sins of the father, thank you. I feel like that's where we're at.
Can we go into public comment?
Yeah, can we move, move on, please?
We are moving on.
Thank you.
No problem. All right. Okay. We're gonna move on to city manager's report.
Public comment?
Public comment, public comment.
Oh, what? We haven't had that yet? Sorry. Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment. The first one signed up is Taylor Dubinsky.
How many people do we have on our public comment? Is that going to their last?
If I can get a second to adjust here real quick.
I can't hear you. What? I've already called him up, so, okay.
Okay.
Hi there.
Hi. My name is Taylor, an Alumagordo resident. While I was not born here, my partner and some of my closest friends were. I've grown to really love Alumagordo. While being exposed to all the good, I've also seen some of the bad. And tonight I'm here to talk about Extreme Amplitude and the jaw-dropping fairy tale that they're pitching for our Economic Development Fund. Let's start with the so-called jobs. The owner claims $140,000 in payroll for 30 part-time workers. That's $4,600 a year, barely enough for ramen noodles and a full tank of gas, if you're lucky. When pressed, the owner brushed it off and said she didn't want people who are just in it for the money. It's not a badge of honor, that's thinly veiled excuse for paying starvation wages. If you can't offer a real paycheck, don't insult us with platitudes. Passion doesn't put food on the table or keep the lights on. Sorry, I'm nervous. So who are these jobs actually for? Not local moms and dads struggling to pay rent, not heads of households doing the impossible to keep the lights on. No, these gigs are for teenagers. Students who can lean on their parents to cover real-life expenses. Why is Alumagordo's Economic Development Fund being used to bankroll after-school pocket change jobs? We're supposed to be, we're supposed to be building up our local workforce, not boosting a business's bottom line by offering jobs that no adult can survive on. And the economic growth argument? Give me a break. If folks need to hold down two or three of these jobs to scrape by, we're not building economic strength, we're building a burnout. An exhausted, underpaid workforce isn't out shopping, eating out, or investing back in our economy. They're just stretched thinner than ever. Now, in regards to the magical profit projections, we're supposed to believe this gymnastics studio will pull in over a million in profit in a city of 31,000 people. I did the math since apparently nobody else will. Classes go for about 100 a month. Even if a miraculous 500 students show up, you might see 600,000 in total revenue, not profit. By the time you cover insurance, equipment, utilities, and yes, maybe even offer a wage that lets someone actually live here, the numbers just don't pencil out. Either the projections are pure fantasy or funding someone's wishful thinking. Let's remember who actually lives here. The median household income is $52,000. 70% of Alumagordo residents' rent, child poverty is at 24%. The families the city is full of are not lining up to shell out $100 or more per month for after-school activities. If prices go up to try to hit those dreams of wild profits, the only thing the business will be full of is empty space. Let's get real about this Lita Ask. She wants taxpayers to pay 1.8 million, for a $1.8 million property, plus another $100,000 in repairs, to open a gymnastics studio that pays poverty wages and caters to the few who can afford it. That's not community involvement, it's a public subsidy for a private fantasy. This doesn't lift up struggling families, doesn't build bridges out of poverty, and doesn't create real opportunity for the people who need it most. It picks winners and leaves everyone else out in the cold. So let's quit pretending this is the answer Alumagordo needs. I have like one last paragraph, if y'all don't mind. Let's quit pretending this is the answer Alumagordo needs. Invest the minimum, if anything at all. Don't let millions in public funds vanish into a business plan that leaves working families and local kids behind. This might seem like an amazing opportunity for them, but the same can't be said for the people of Alumagordo. She can stand up here and huff and puff when you press her about things you should, she should have thought about. And I say keep pressing. Find out, find out why she's so mad you won't give her the full amount. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Is it okay if I go ahead and jump to the front?
So why do you want her to go first?
Couple of things. I'm, I'm on the.
Okay, but you're last, so hang on just.
Can I, can I bump to the front?
Can you hang on just one second? I'm trying to understand why are we switching?
She's getting ready to leave, so she wants to make a statement.
I can wait.
Serena, are you okay with that?
No, no, it's okay. I'll wait.
Okay, nope, you can come on up.
It's okay. Go ahead. I don't wanna.
No, you can come on up, it's fine.
No, you, you clearly expressed that that was not allowed, and that's okay. I want to make sure I'm following the rules.
As we move along forward, I recommend we go by the roll call list in that order.
Okay, fine. Serena Paul.
I apologize, I didn't hear that question. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, and Ms. Huff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Serena Paul. I'm a resident of Alumagordo, and I'm a public school teacher. Before I begin, I want to be clear. I have great respect for Extreme Amplitude and for the work that the owner has put into serving so many of our families over the years, including our nephews who love going to their weekly open gym. This is not about opposing her business or diminishing what she has built. My comments tonight are simply about ensuring that when taxpayer dollars are involved, the city has the information that it needs through independent verification to make a reasonable and well-informed decision, and to be a voice for residents who share similar concerns about this project. After looking through the city's Lita analysis and the applicant's presentation from November 5th, there are several major concerns that stand out. These concerns don't require speculation, they come directly from city staff and from the applicant's own numbers. The projected growth is dramatically inconsistent with the business's history. According to the city's analysis, Extreme Amplitude has historically grown revenue by about 22% per year. But the application now projects a 545% revenue growth and over 1,000% payroll growth within five years. City staff describe these numbers as overly ambitious and not consistent with historical performance. When projected growth is more than 10 times higher than historical growth, it absolutely requires an independent feasibility study. In addition, the enrollment projections simply don't match Alumagordo's size or our demographics. The applicant projects more than 1,500 student enrollments, which represents a 429% increase. City staff said that this is not supported by our population base, our household income, or by competing activities available to both children and our families. Staff has even raised concerns about market oversaturation. A market study is the only way to know whether the community can realistically support this level of expansion. The financial assumptions also raise some significant concerns. The business's projected payroll-to-revenue ratio is 1 to 1, meaning that payroll would basically absorb nearly all of the revenue. This is far outside of the business's historical range of 35 to 45%, and the city has said that this model is financially unrealistic for normal operations. Any financial plan showing that level of strain absolutely needs third-party review. And both our city manager and our city attorney have urged caution. The city manager called the 1.9 million request a high-risk venture. The city attorney warning that exceeding the staff recommendation increases the city's legal risk under that anti-donation clause because the city must prove proportional public benefit. When both your senior administrative and legal advisors are sounding alarms, the responsible next step is further analysis. Additionally, the city's analysis notes that additional information requested from the applicant after the November 5th meeting was not submitted before the final agenda was published. For a project of this size, missing information should be a signal to slow down, not to move forward. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the commission to require an independent market and feasibility study before considering any Lita funding for this project. This protects the city, it protects taxpayers, and it protects the applicant by ensuring that expectations for growth and expansion are based on solid data, not on hopes or assumptions. Again, this is not in opposition to her or her business. It's simply a request for careful, responsible due diligence, something that every business and every taxpayer deserves. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. And as you can see, I know I let them go over, but this is a pretty hot topic. So I think everybody deserves a chance to speak. Craig Johnson is next.
Hello. I am Craig Johnson, and I'm gonna give my wife Echo some extra time in her presentation.
Hello. So I want to make it clear that the numbers were given to Dr. Hernandez, just not in the same format, because I had submitted the slideshow prior to the date that the agenda closed. But that's irrelevant at this point. After careful consideration and many sleepless nights, I've decided to withdraw my application for Extreme Amplitude. This process has brought tremendous visibility to our gym and the positive impact we've had on hundreds of local children. But it has also come at a heavy cost. Misinformation, damaging personal attacks, and relentless negative commentary have taken a toll. Not just on me and my family, but my staff, our athletes, and the very children we serve. I've always believed that a community should be able to discuss differences honestly and respectfully. Unfortunately, the tone of, of the past few weeks has made that impossible. Continuing would only prolong division and distract from what truly matters, providing a safe, supportive place for our kids to grow, learn resilience, and chase their dreams. My 10-year-old daughter asked me recently, why are people being so mean? I didn't have a good answer for her. And I refuse to let her or any of our extreme kids grow up to think this is how adults solve problems. So today, with gratitude for the support I've received, and with sadness for what might have been, I am withdrawing our application. Extreme Amplitude will keep serving this community the way we always have, quietly, positively, with open doors for every child and person who walks through them. Thank you for your time and understanding. Thank you for your time and understanding.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it. Now we're gonna move on to the city manager's report.
The golf course irrigation project has reached substantial completion, and we officially entered the warranty phase on November 14th. The system is fully functional and staff have been thoroughly trained on operations and maintenance. Downtown paving was completed today, keeping us on track for a grand opening on November 29, 2025, so that is the Great Box Project. As a reminder, this project was originally scheduled for completion in June of 2026, so a special thank you to our contractors for finishing early and helping out the downtown businesses. I, as in Stephanie, because she wrote this, also sent an email requesting your availability for our consultants conducting the planning and zoning ordinance process and modernization review. Please respond as soon as possible so we can schedule you or let me know tonight. So far, Mayor Payne, Mayor-elect McDonald, Commissioner Tapley, and Mayor-elect Patillo have responded. Stephanie will send out calendar invites once she has everybody's preferences. It is important to let us know so we can start filling in the time slots with developers, builders, and contractors, as Bohan and Houston wants to speak with as many stakeholders as possible while they're in town. We have definitely highlighted in their scope of work that we would like them to talk to all the parties involved. City staff will not be at any of these meetings, as we want everybody to be able to speak freely and Bohan and Houston to get the biggest bang for their buck. If you have any questions on the times, I do have a list of times available if you want to speak about those. A public workshop on the technical standards will be held on December 3, 2025, at 5:00 PM at the Civic Center. A PSA will go out tomorrow, and all contractors, developers, builders, electricians, and related professionals are invited. This is their opportunity to provide feedback directly. Steph will also send out calendar invites for the commission if you choose to attend this technical standard review. Finally, I'm supposed to make a joke, but I only know inappropriate jokes, so I'm just gonna add that Stephanie is saddened to miss tonight's meeting, and she is enjoying her son's soccer banquet, so she'll be back for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who did you say, I'm sorry?
Yep.
Who needs to respond for the, for the meeting?
Commissioner Guthrie, Commissioner Robinson, Commissioner Burnett, Commissioner Reardon, and that's it.
Okay. All right. I only, I guess I probably should have phrased that differently. I did not hear you say meeting.
That's okay, I'll just, I'm, I'm pretending city manager so I can call him out.
That's okay.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on. Remarks and inquiries by the city commission.
I got a couple. I'm gonna put it on the record again, our speed bump on Florida. When are we gonna fix that? Over between, it's between Catalina and 16th Street on Florida Avenue. I've asked about it about three different times, so I'm just putting it on there again. The, the study, or the consultant with Bohan and Houston, I had a little concern when I read that, because I know with the former planner, she had currently been working with, with an attorney and had a planning and zoning ordinance completely drafted and ready to come before commission, and a sign ordinance.
Completely drafted is a long-term, for what that actually ended up being.
Okay, well, could we see it before we spend, how much is Bohan and Houston charging? 60, 70, 80,000?
They're on a time and materials contract with a cap of 80,000 at this point.
Okay, how come, if they got a cap of 80,000, don't y'all have to have approval from us to go above 60?
No, because they were part of the on-call competitive bid contract, and we did it through a task order.
Okay, I just, I have a little concern with that, that we're gonna spend upwards of $80,000 when we haven't even seen what we've already paid for.
And I will be 100% blunt with you, the most of that work was done on the code enforcement ordinance, very little was actually done on the planning and zoning ordinance. Most of the work that was done, the planning and zoning ordinances, was done on a draft subdivision ordinance that Nancy put a substantial amount of work into, which is what we're having Bohan and Houston start with. All of the other drafts that I've seen of the planning and zoning ordinances were so scattered and done in such piecemeal that they're almost unusable. So that's why we decided...
The attorney that drafted all of that is a very reputable attorney in the state of New Mexico.
Oh, I'm not saying that he's not, I'm just saying that the way it was handled was not well, and so that's why we decided to go forward and why we really also want to bring in outside parties to provide guidance, because no outside parties were brought in as part of that initial review last time.
I personally would like to see the ordinance, the whole thing, I'd like to read it.
We can provide you with the multiple drafts.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to see it, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I feel it's, you know, we should take a look at it as the policy setters, and if we decide that it's, needs to be rewritten, then maybe at that point, we could do that. But I just think it's a waste of taxpayers' dollars when we spent, I don't know how much we spent with, with Randy to draft that and how much staff time was, was spent on it. Same with the sign ordinance, I guess there's a sign ordinance as well that's already drafted.
There is one that was not considered functional enough to bring to the commission at any point in time. There's one draft of it that doesn't even say the word billboard in it.
That's all I had.
So I have something, because I'm gonna get in trouble if I don't mention it. Commissioner Guthrie. So do not laugh at me. I do have...
I've been asked about the same thing, so...
Yeah, Josh has been asked about the same thing, so I'm just the one taking the hint and bringing it up. So, I don't know that there's anything we can do, but I've had multiple people, Johnny and Ken, I'm not gonna say their last names mainly, who really want a fishing pond in Almagordo. They won't let it go, I promised I'd bring it up, I have no idea where we'd put a fishing pond or how that would even work, but I'm putting it out there. They would like us to look into potentially a fishing pond for Almagordo. Just so you know. You wanna say something?
Director Nunley, do you want to talk about it?
Do you have a fishing pond? Do we already have this in the works?
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up.
Didn't there used to be one down there by, Alameda Park, or not Alameda, down...
Yeah, that's correct, the fireman's pond behind the fire station.
Yes.
Used to be there until, until the 80s, correct. I've actually mentioned this several times over the last six years, I'd like to try to put a pond in, multiple ponds actually, and they're multipurpose storage for reclaimed water. That way we can use them for pumping, because currently we exhaust about 300,000 gallons to waste, or 300 million, sorry, gallons during the winter months that we could actually be putting into storage and repurpose, like at Griggs, Washington. The first one we're looking at is behind the softball fields located off of Walker. Of course, there's, that's just been talk, so there's nothing official. It is in a Parkmaster Plan right now, but there's nothing moving forward with that, it's just talk.
And would it have fish in it?
Yeah, you could have fish in it.
Can we talk about it more? Can we get a fishing pond, Dave?
It's not cheap.
Make the magic happen.
It's not cheap, and then there's a lot of loopholes that we gotta go through with the regulatory agencies, classification of the water. I mean, currently, we make Class A reclaimed water, so it's perfectly fitting, but I'm all for it. It gives me more storage. But there is lake management that goes along with that, too.
The, the one that's in Las Cruces down there, I don't know what that park is.
Album Park.
Is that what they do? Is it reclaimed water as well?
Correct, and El Paso has several of them, a lot of cities use, use it that way, and that's, instead of putting it in tanks, you can put it in ponds, and that way we can irrigate more through the night and then recover during the day. We're also looking at a big one over at Griggs, and that one, it was proposed to look at making it with multi-peninsulas to where it can be used for wedding photos, graduation parties, quinceañeras, et cetera, you know, rental spots for the park.
So how do we, how do we progress it, just to see what we can do?
Well, I guarantee if Mindy's watching, she's gonna wanna jump all over this.
Mindy! I hope Johnny, Ken, and Mindy are all watching. They'll be very proud. That's good, thank you, Dave.
It's cost, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
It costs money.
And all the time, and then renewal of the permit, it's not cheap. Probably cost us upwards of 70 to 100,000 to get the permit. We're about to approach doing a new permit renewal anyway, and nothing cheap anymore, period, so...
But we do have options for locations, right?
We have plenty of options for locations that will work hydraulically.
Okay.
Griggs is probably the best one, because we have to, we really need to upgrade that booster station over there, and that would allow us to put in a wet well and feed directly off that.
Okay.
Where would it go over in Griggs if we built one?
It was more towards the Henglader Park, is the proposal, I mean, the proposed option.
Hey Baxter, you keep this going, when I'm not here anymore.
Before you sit down, Dave, name and title.
Dave Nunley, Utilities Director.
Thank you, Dave. I'm done. No more.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, me too. All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda, I know we're pulling item 5. Does anybody else have anything they want to pull? Okay, do I have a motion to approve items 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, and 8 from the consent agenda? Okay, I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie?
How are we gonna vote? At this time, it does seem that the voting is working, so we can give that a try.
Mine's timed out, I just clicked over to it, and I'm, I'm not even signed in.
Well, this, disregard what I just said, we'll do this the other way.
Oh yeah, I, I can't...
Mine's working. Mine's working.
Mine's not, wait.
Mine's not.
Yeah, mine says 500, the request timed out.
There is no ongoing vote that you can cast, okay, maybe that's the problem.
You wanna try it and see, Dylan?
I, I won't be able to.
I went ahead and sent a prompt, let me know if you can see that.
Got it?
It came up. Mine did.
Mine did. You got yours?
I'm voting.
Mine timed out already.
Commissioner Burnett, if you're still with us, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm an aye also.
Commissioner Robinson votes aye. Mine didn't come up.
So for the record, Commissioner Reardon voted aye, Commissioner Robinson voted aye. Commissioner Tapley?
Aye.
Commissioner Burnett, aye.
Did that, it didn't come up?
It is not working, but the motion passed 7-0.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to item 5, that was pulled from the consent agenda, consider an act upon the award of RFP 2025-011, water and wastewater analytical testing services to Aqua Environmental Testing Laboratory.
Sorry, Dave, I, I just, what kind of water testing? Were they testing like the, like all the water, I mean?
Primarily, we've had this, had a similar contract in place since 2012, when we became, when we crossed over from the private contractor to the city. They currently do all of our, the majority of our wastewater sampling, or testing, I'm sorry, we collect all the samples, they do the actual testing.
Okay, so that, they've always done it?
They, yes, they've done it since 2012, this is a renewal. This is one of those that we are, and we are exploring options of trying to bring in the lab operations completely in-house for better etiquette at the best, that way we have operators communicating with operators. But we have to, we have to take these samples, or else we're breaking regulatory compliance. So this is, this is the way I keep it going, is to stay ahead and keep a current contract running.
How much is this contract a year? It doesn't give us a fiscal impact?
Historically, we probably spend about 65,000 a year between both water and wastewater. We do do our, well, we don't, we do do our RTCR samples on the potable water, but they do not charge us for those. Those are covered by the conservation fee, the 3 cents.
I think people just need to know that.
Yeah. No, it's, it's completely for regulatory compliance of our wastewater, I mean, that's how we supply Class A water back to all the parks and how we treat everything, I mean, everything is monitored.
Awesome, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Dave.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, we're good.
All right. Should, you want me to just take the vote?
We could do it that way, sure.
Yeah, let's just do that.
School way.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve item 5?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Tapley, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? He said aye. Motion passes 7-0. It's all coming back to me now, I remember how we used to do this, okay. We're gonna move on to public hearings, consider an act upon the question of whether the Alcoholic Beverage Control Division of the State of New Mexico should approve or disapprove the transfer of ownership and location of Spencer Liquor License with no, no premises consumption with no patio service to the applicant Murphy Oil, DBA Murphy Express, located at 2919 White Sands Boulevard, with the transfer from BW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, doing businesses all subs, at 2201 North White Sands. That's a little confusing, so... I almost read that as two different things, but that's not two different things, is it?
So what this is, is basically a transfer of ownership and location of Spencer Liquor License, and with that, where it's coming from is BMW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, DBA, all subs number 102177 at 2201 North White Sands Boulevard. But the applicant is Murphy Oil USA Incorporated, DBA Murphy Express, number 3576.
So is this the old, the old all subs that was torn down? It's transferring from there to the new Murphys?
I believe so, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
Okay. That, it looks like to the new Murphys.
Actually, you know what, I think, I think this is the one, the old Express Lane. It's the old Express Lane all subs right there at Indian Wells and, and...
And San White Sands.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh yeah.
It's from there to the new...
And then it was all subs after, yeah, I think so too. No, I assumed it was that, but the way it was worded, I got a little confused. So it's going to the new Murphys, I'm assuming, okay. All right, does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve item 9?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Tapley, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Reardon. Does that require a roll call vote? No, I don't think so.
It does not, it is not a resolution ordinance.
All those in favor, aye.
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 All those opposed, and motion passes 7-0. Okay, so what do I do about item 10?
Just pull it.
Just pull it?
I recommend we state what happened, just one more time for the record, just in this section.
Or table it, just, do we table it or pull it? Right.
I don't think we would table it, because...
Yeah, I mean, I think we would just... Just take no action, yeah.
The subject is...
I almost feel like we should just approve it as is, but...
Has withdrawn their application to strike a court from...
So is that an official withdrawal, even though it was during public comment?
That's why I just want this on the record, but I believe the applicant left, so we're basically having to do that now, I believe.
She stated she didn't, she was withdrawing it, so she doesn't want it.
So we just withdraw it?
So yeah, I...
Yeah, I would just, as, as the mayor, I would just reiterate that the applicant, subject to number 10, has withdrawn their LITA application publicly, and so because of that move to, to pull it from the agenda.
Okay, well, what Daryl just said, item 10, the applicant during Commissioner comments, I'm sorry, during public comments withdrew her application for LITA funds and stated that she no longer wishes to pursue that. So with that, we will pull item 10.
We need to vote on that, or no?
It's pulled.
Yeah, do we need to vote on that?
You don't vote on things?
I was like, I would vote on it, yes. Okay.
Hold on.
The voice in the back declaratory said yes. I would, I would move to pull it from the agenda and then have someone seconded if they show inclined and then vote.
So yeah, so make a motion to remove item 10 from the agenda, second and then vote on it.
All right. So, do I have a motion to remove item 10 due to the withdrawal of the application?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Tapley, do I have a second? A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald? Is that a roll call vote, or does it matter?
This is a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem, Sheriff McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Chrisel Guthrie?
Abstain.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Abstain.
Commissioner Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Mayor Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes five with two abstentions.
Correct, 5-0-2.
5-0-2, okay, yes, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to new business. Consider an act upon the first publication of ordinance 1720 declaring the need for designation by Otero County, New Mexico by and through the county's Board of County Commissioners of certain real property within the county's area, holy cow, of operation overlapping the municipal boundaries of the city of Alamogordo as a metropolitan redevelopment area. Hello there.
Hello, how are you all? Good evening, Chris Muirhead with the Modrell Firm. We're your public finance attorneys. And just for full disclosure, we also are public finance attorneys for Otero County. We don't advise them, nor do we you, on policy decisions, and that's what you have in front of you. On this, they'd reached out to us to walk through how to do a metropolitan redevelopment area if they wanted to, in fact, pass these benefits on to this Patriot Point development. And so we've done that, and here tonight, I'm here representing you, but so if you have any questions, feel free to ask them. I don't think it's a conflict, I'm not advising you whether to do it or not, it's entirely a policy decision, I want to do it, but I can answer questions about the process and make sure you're comfortable with what's in front of you. To summarize it, this does go back, and I think you're all familiar with it, Patriot Point is a multifamily housing development. They were looking for economic incentives to lighten their burden of building it, and so, under New Mexico law, you couldn't use an industrial revenue bond, which would be one mechanism to get the property tax abatement they were seeking. The one other area that does fit, that has been used in metropolitan redevelopment areas in the city of Albuquerque, is to, if they're building it in a metropolitan redevelopment area, there is a seven-year tax abatement for the increased value of the property from year one through year seven. Throughout that seven years, they still pay the property tax, they were paying on the undeveloped value of that property, but they would get a seven-year abatement on the increased value. And then it goes back on the tax rolls for all taxing entities after year seven. So the, the county, as they, I think, if I understand it correctly, maybe this company approached the city at one time and then approached the county about, hey, what benefits could you give us? The county commission has expressed support to figure out what they could do that would be beneficial to this multifamily housing, to maybe incentivize it actually being done. They identified this metropolitan redevelopment avenue. However, under the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code, the county cannot designate an area within the city's territorial jurisdiction as metropolitan redevelopment area without the city's consent, saying, yes, we agree with that, and we acknowledge it, and please move forward and do what you're going to do. So, what you have in front of you tonight, if you choose you want to do this, is the first reading of an ordinance that would be up for, for a adoption at a subsequent meeting after the proper notices are published, to provide that support to Otero County for the benefit of Patriot Point multifamily housing. In talking to Mr. Moore, I understand, and I hadn't actually, not being familiar with all of the ins and outs of the streets in Alamogordo, the full scope of what the county had designated may be overly broad, is the concern. What I can tell you is, your consent, you are free to scope it however you'd like to. This is what I think the county attorney did, to just get something in front of you and do the publications, but you are well within your full authority to provide whatever scope of the outline of that metropolitan redevelopment area that you want to do. The good news is, this is not for consideration tonight, so you all can consider and provide your input, and Mr. Moore, you can get back to Mr. Nichols, or however you want to do it, to say, here's what the city's willing to do. And so, that's what this is, it would provide that seven-year property tax abatement to, incremental abatement to Patriot Point development if Otero County does go through and designate it as metropolitan redevelopment area. How it fits under the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code, and it has unfortunate wording in there about blighted and slum and the things of that nature, which are not, not descriptive of Alamogordo. And so that creates perception issues, clearly. The Metropolitan Redevelopment Code is kind of a mess. It's very broad, gives a lot of authority to local governments to do different things. And so where this fits is, you can, if you are in need of housing, declare an area to be technically blighted, again, not the appropriate term, really. But is the door to do this, is the need for housing, not only in Alamogordo, but pretty much anywhere. But if there, it is perfectly legal to designate it to incentivize housing developments. Happy to answer any questions about it that you might have.
I do have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Can you explain the process for doing this?
Yes, so it is, if you decide you want to provide this to consent, the county then has to have multiple public hearings. And then it has to develop the Metropolitan Redevelopment Plan. Now, if you're in the city of Albuquerque, which is, we represent, has multiple, 12, 13 different metropolitan redevelopment areas. In those, there is an extensive plan about what your economic development's going to be, what your reconstruction's going to be, what other improvements you're going to do, and what the full scope of the hope is for the redevelopment area. And then over time, you utilize that code to incentivize private development coming in to do that. So the county then would have multiple hearings, two different hearings, to approve that plan. Here, it's unique, because we're talking about probably just one parcel, or whatever real estate size it is for this point. So the Metropolitan Redevelopment Plan really is going to be very narrow to improve and increase housing for citizens of Alamogordo. So the plan would be very simple. That is not the norm, what you would see, at least in what has been historically done. There is no size limitation under Metropolitan Redevelopment Code, that it has to be of such, you know, size and plan has to be X, Y, and Z. It can be smaller, there's nothing prohibiting it. So this is very much a surgical, surgical strike to do this one project. Once the county approves the plan, then it creates metropolitan redevelopment area, it is still governed by the county in terms of what happens there, but the plan is so narrow, there really isn't any authority to do anything other than build the Patriot Point multifamily housing and rent it out. And so, and then that would be in effect for the seven years of the abatement, and they could decide then at that point to remove the metropolitan redevelopment designation for that property. So, this is unique, it's not illegal, it's unique and it's creative to try to address housing shortages within the community.
I just feel so much better now, thank you.
Yeah.
Can you tell me how long the process is?
Oh, it is, uh, three to four months, probably, with all the hearings. So if you think, if it starts with where we are right now, to being done, you might be looking at the area being designated in March.
In March?
Yeah, and so.
That's not bad.
What's that, I'm sorry?
That's not bad.
Yeah. So, again, what you were used to seeing, if this were a traditional metropolitan redevelopment area, that wasn't an area that was considered blighted or really economically depressed, you have an extensive plan about how you're going to address that. And that's not what this is. This is really a mechanism to try to incentivize housing, where the industrial revenue bond doesn't recognize housing as, I'm not going to get into weeds on that, but just generally has not been used as a mechanism to provide incentives for developers to build multifamily housing. So it's, this is the avenue. It has been done in Albuquerque, but in those situations, in the four or five that we've done, the metropolitan redevelopment area was already created, and it had been for years. I mean, most of the ones in Albuquerque have been around for decades. And so the ones where we've done multifamily housing, the plan was already in place, and so it was just a step of doing the, the deal with that developer to build the housing.
Got a quick question, more for Daryl. After reading this agenda report, I had questions about that legal description and how large of an area that was, and we kind of looked at it, and it's a huge portion of the city. I had to talk to Daryl and Stephanie about maybe downsizing it, but based off of what you're saying, do we want to make it that large, that we, like we talked about? Because then they would, the county would have to come up with a plan of how we're going to redevelop that extra area, correct?
Do you want me to do that?
I mean, yeah, if you.
Mayor, Commissioner Reardon, yeah, so there then you were looking at the idea of incentivizing multiple multifamily housing or other developments, because you've already designated that whole area. Again, it's a perception issue about declaring something blighted, when in fact, it doesn't fit that definition. But under the statute, the lack of housing or the need for housing fits. But yes, to answer your question directly, the bigger and broader it is, the more responsibility to figure out the whole area.
When I had my discussion with the attorney, you know, this, the original, what they have in there is like from Taco Bell all the way to Scenic. From Scenic to, what's that road, Aspen? Or not Aspen? Abbott. And then from Abbott all the way down to White Sands Boulevard. I mean, it encompasses a lot of the newer subdivisions in town, and it was really, really large. When I talked to them, it would basically be my district and your district.
It's six?
Well, the, what me and Daryl and Stephanie.
Four and three.
Yeah, the one that me and Daryl and Stephanie looked at would be from the corner of First and White Sands to Fourth and White Sands. And then all the way, did we say Scenic originally?
So, the, the.
Or was it that Santa, that Cruz?
Yeah, it was, it was basically from the intersection of 10th and White Sands, down 10th Street to Cuba.
Yes.
And then from Cuba to Canyon, and then kind of cutting across that Mountain View, and then down 4th Street, that little, that carve out that goes down Benell, and then to Cruz, to First Street.
And then over to First, and then back to White Sands.
To White Sands, as, as an option. But I guess my, my answer and also question, since we have an expert here, so I'll gladly talk to them. Is if, if we do a larger area, that does open up, I believe, more room for possible redevelopment plans and different other companies to kind of utilize that. But if, if, because in this case, specifically for Patriot Point, we're working with the county and trying to support them as they go through that, if we designate too big of an area, would the city then have to create their own separate MRA, or like, would the, I guess, I don't want to like, you know, throw
Yes.
the county to the wolves and then have us having like two competing MRAs, or how would that?
So in this, the mayor, Mr. Moore, where you have it in a way, it is procedurally situated now, this is a county asking you permission for them to create this district. So if you give them permission based on this designation, and they choose not to create it that big, there's no obligation on the city to go ahead and fill that in. This is just giving them permission to say, you figure out what you want to do, we're supportive.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a comment, because the way I was reading it, even though it said, it starts on Panorama, on the corner of, of Panorama and White Sands, it goes down Panorama, down Acatelo, all the way down to Scenic, and it covers that area. So you have a brand-new subdivisions, and Quail Hollow, number two, is right there. And so when you start coming east from White Sands, that area is probably the most housed. You have less houses in there for sale or vacant. So when you come back from that area.
Occupied.
Yes, it's occupied. And so when you're looking at the area that it's covering, and then when you come down that area, so you're covering everything on that's west of Scenic. So when you come down, you have more new housing developments in there. And then, of course, you're including the high school. And that area, that, I mean, from 4th Street, from 4th Street on White Sands, you're taking it all the way up to Scenic and Abbott. That's, that's a lot of territory.
Right. And I believe Mayor Pro Tem, I believe that is where it started off as a massive swath for then the commission to whittle down, even if it wants to, because it was originally proposed as just that lot. And if that's where the commission decides, that's what we want, we just want that single lot designated, then that is the commission's prerogative in your ability to declare what parts of Alamogordo, or what part would be deemed in necessary need of housing. And so if it, if it's a larger swath that y'all want, and then again, the county would come in and be like, okay, well, our plan is for this lot, then that, you know, that designation is there. But if it's also the commission's prerogative to just name that, that plot, or that, you know, that square, that square section being, this is the area that we're deeming as in need of housing, then that is 100% your, within your, your realm and your authority to name that single plot. And then that would be what, when the, the county is working on their actual plan, that would be what they have to work with as well. So whatever we designate, or not we, whatever y'all designate, is what then the county has to work with in regards to their plan, because they can't do anything without y'all's authority. So if it's, if it's the entire city of Alamogordo, or if it's that literal singular plot that was presented to you when this idea first came forth, that is your guys' prerogative and your authority to declare.
I have a question. So do the, does the land have to be connected in order for it to all be within one? I guess what I'm thinking is if we do that one lot, let's say, and then we take it out to the other side of White Sands, right, do a different area? Is it going to be two separate situations that we have to deal with? They're going to have their own process? Is that why they're just trying to do a bigger area all at once?
From my understanding, the larger area was solely so that, that you as a commission can whittle it down to what you are comfortable with.
But we can't pick and choose, like, portions?
But, I was going to say, I'll, I'll let.
Yeah, so Mayor Commissioner, the, they do not have to be contiguous. So you could have multiple areas designated, which ties to the Mayor Pro Tem's comment. It really is a policy decision, and in good faith, you're looking at it and saying, what do we feel comfortable that is in need of housing? And, you know, an area that has had multiple subdivisions and is fully developed and, and doesn't fit that, you probably would move it away from that. Because you want to be able to defend it at some level, to say, no, this really is area that is in need of it. So to tie the two together, they don't have to be all connected. You could pick and choose and designate different spots in need of it. And then in some ways, that's more defensible, because you're saying, we're being strategic about this, and these are the areas that we really think this works, and we have developers coming in, and that's really what's going to drive it, or is there going to be private money coming in to develop this, that wanted built in that spot?
But it's not guaranteed.
Well, usually, so Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, when it's developed, the, it could be done, you create the district as a whole that needs help. It's economically depressed, or there needs housing, or whatever, with the idea of incentivizing private money to come in. So that's one way to do it. Here, you have somebody coming in saying, we want to build this, but we need some tax incentives to make this pencil out, or however they're looking at it. So here you have, you have the bird in the hand already. But they certainly could be done the other way, where you create a district to incentivize private money coming in by saying, hey, we can give you this seven-year tax abatement, and maybe some other public-private partnership benefits through the MR code. So it could work either way.
If we did the whole, like, say we shrunk it down a little bit, but we did the boundary that, that we discussed, would all of that area be eligible for that property tax abatement?
And what was the area that you discussed?
Me and, me and Daryl looked at it, because that, that area was huge. So we looked at it on the map, and that's why I said it would be my district and your district. Where Patriot Point is, I have a little piece of that district. So Patriot Point's actually mine. And then we looked at going from First and White Sands to 10th and White Sands, all the way up First Street to Cruz Avenue, it's not quite to Scenic, but it would encompass a majority of that older district, or that older part of your district. And then it would catch that little finger part of mine, where Patriot Point was going to be. So, but it would, as we had talked about.
I, I would need the streets before, I would.
I really wish staff would have had a map of this, because I was confused when I read the legal description. You know, and I was trying to figure out which was which, because it was talking about meets and bounds and, and section lines, and so I had to look at the map and, and figure out what was what. So I really wish we could have had a map in the agenda report on Friday, but.
Well, I think for the last six years, I have been told in District Number Five, is that the, anybody that would come in, contractors, developers, the, the bottom line was, they couldn't make any money in that area because of anything that was built. So I had, I'm a little skeptical about being placed in something where something may not happen. And I think it's, you know, I think it's well and good to have something, but, you know, I said, when you don't, when they don't give you the plan, or what could be, or what the possibilities are, all I see is the, the Patriot Point going in, and that's all I see at this point. So to encompass all of the, you know, I said, taking White Sands, you know, to 4th Street, First and Fourth, all the way down, I, I don't see, I, I see that as just another promise, because we've lived in District Five, and I, I said, until we've had the. I, I don't see, I, I see that as, uh, just another, uh, promise, because, uh, we've lived in District Five, and I, I said, until we've had the Main Street and the Inkwell, I can safely say, nothing in 30 years has happened in that area for building. So I'm a little skeptical, and when they include that, it doesn't, it doesn't ring true.
Well, the, the downtown area has already been declared an MRD. My concern is, I look at where he wants to build, there's nothing else around there to build. There's nothing else, that, literally, the only thing left there is his lot. And I, I don't know, I just, I, like, I understand, you know, you do this to gain more housing, but, my goodness, what is around there? Absolutely, it's all apartments, it's all housing. And so, you know, we're not doing it for that reason, and that's fine, that, whatever, but, but we're specifically doing this specifically for one developer. So, I don't know, I, I, that, that, that gives me a little bit of heartburn, because, um, so I, I would think that you would need to expand that. So then my next question is, let's say it did encompass, like, Acatio, which is this subdivision we were talking about earlier. I'm trying to understand, what does that do for a developer, let's say? Because there, like, Acatio, there is a lot of land for sale over there. So let's say a developer came in, what, does that just give the developer the tax break? Or does it, because those would be single-family homes that people would purchase, so what does that do for that?
So Mayor, and that's, nobody gets a tax benefit without action by the governing body. So in doing this, when you create the district, or you give them consent, I think what you would have in there also would be authority for approval on any subsequent project that they want to approve for an MR designation.
Right, but.
Yes, so here, they're trying to do it back to, to your point, Mayor Protam, initially starting with just the one Patriot Point. So there would be a transaction around that to get it off the tax rolls for those seven years. Just because you live in that MR area doesn't mean you're not on the property tax rolls. You don't get the benefit unless you go through the process.
Right, no, I get that.
So by having those other, the, nothing would happen there unless, um, there was a decision that the city agreed with and the county agreed with, that there was a development that you felt fit, and you wanted to give that development this property tax.
Right, and that, I guess I, maybe I need to word that differently. What I'm asking is, let's say a developer comes in and wants to develop in a, in a metropolitan redevelopment district that we've designated, the developer gets the tax incentive?
Okay.
Not the homeowners?
I'm with you, so this is, is an excellent question, um, and it kind of is in whether you're doing a public improvement district or other things where there's benefits to a developer to come do it. In theory, the idea is it costs less for the developer, and they will pass that off in lower rents for that period of time, or lower sale prices for the home, because the homeowner is paying for it in different ways, and that benefit gets passed on. So, uh, in theory, it's supposed to be a trickle-down effect, that the benefit rolls down to the renter in a multifamily hu- housing, that their rent is cheaper for at least that seven-year period. And so the developer is enjoying the, the lower costs on the front end to make it potentially pencil out, but the idea would be that that benefit then tied to a lower rent.
But that's in theory, that's not actually, it doesn't, there's nothing legally that says that has to be in practice.
No, you would have to, I've never seen it legally enforced as you are required to pass this on.
Right, so what if there, what if it's a developer, like we were talking about, and let's say they wanted to build houses on it that they were then going to sell? Does the tax break extend to the people that are building the house, or is it only for the developer?
No, in that situation, we've not seen it like that, it's only been in multifamily housing. Hypothetically, if you did it for single-family homes, the owner of the property enjoys the benefit for the seven-year period.
The owner of the property, not the developer?
Yeah, so the developer, whoever it is in the multifamily housing context, continues to own the facility and rents the units. So they get the property tax benefit.
Right.
On single-family homes, it, I, I don't know that it would work or you would see it. There's different other mechanisms that might be used, like a public improvement district or other things.
Yeah, so that's really what I'm asking, so if we, even if we extended it out to Acatio, I don't, I mean, there could potentially be somebody that, that builds rentals there, but the likelihood is more that they're going to build single-family homes to sell.
Right, you probably wouldn't do it in that context.
So you wouldn't, that would not be part of the?
I, I don't know that you would see the benefit to the community, that you would do it that way. It's really, this fits in the context of a multifamily housing project with 200 units, or whatever the number might be.
Okay.
In your context, this concept that they're using here doesn't really fit right, and so you probably wouldn't see it there.
But.
That, that being said, then, I think we should just do the parcel, because the reason, uh, when I talked to Daryl about doing it, that area which caught, did a lot of her area, or her district and my district, was so that we could redevelop it. But it doesn't look like that this would be an incentive.
It's a unique, sorry, Mayor.
No, you're fine.
It's a unique concept, let me look at it a little bit, I've never seen it work that way, because you have different mechanisms.
Well, see, like, she has a lot of vacant, you know, hers is the oldest part of town, and, and, I'm sorry, she, Commissioner McDonald.
Sure.
Mayor Protam, I'm sorry, has a lot of, of vacant lots, or a lot of very, very rundown properties in her district. And if we did the boundary from, from First and White Sands to 10th and White Sands.
I'm going to change my answer here, so if you designate, because now I'm thinking about it differently. So let's say you designate the big area, and then you have somebody coming in saying, I'm willing as a developer and come in and look at, like, maybe a city block, and I'm going to redevelop these six homes, or other things, or there's maybe some economic development there. Then you enter an agreement for that on an individual basis with them, for those properties, and those properties, yes, those properties, now I'm seeing it, as you were saying. Those properties, as you redevelop within an MR area, could enter into an agreement. And interestingly, now the city of Albuquerque is doing that more, where they have targeted individual parcels to do this in a broader district. So now, it, it, it took me a minute to click, but I'm with you now.
Would it be beneficial to go ahead and, and declare that larger area, or?
What I would say, Commissioner Reardon, is that it would, I would approve the larger area with the caveat in your ordinance, and whenever you do this, that individual project approvals, because it's going to be the county that creates it, um, uh, need your, need.
They, they may not want to hassle with trying to redevelop that, they just want to do the one.
And so in that place, you'd want to have maybe a, a voice in the process, so, because right now you're agreeing to theoretically just Patriot Point. That was what started this whole thing. But if you do a much bigger area, I think the question is bigger, that city probably won't have a, a say in what happens. And so if the county wants to create this.
Okay.
Or maybe the county just creates it, adds to that parcel, and fine, you're done, then the city can do its own.
That makes more sense, then we have control over it.
Then you have complete control, yes.
Okay, so we can actually come back and designate an area without the county?
Oh, absolutely.
A metropolitan redevelopment.
This is unique, because the county wants to do it within your jurisdiction, and so they need your consent, but you can do this all on your own, if you wanted to.
Yeah, see, that's weird to me, why didn't we just do it to begin with?
Well, I have another comment, because I have been, um, well, I've been listening to, uh, the Sacramento, Sacramento Mountain Foundation, and they have, um, presented five, um, pilot, uh, projects to the city, or they will be introducing it to the city. I hope I'm not letting anything out of the bag, but, uh, they're committed. And so to me, to take something that is maybe, when we have something that is a little bit more solid, that could be incorporated with the, the city's planning, as far as, you know, um, designating a comprehensive, uh, plan for the city, and how we want it to grow, I, I, I really would hesitate, because I'd rather see the, because we already know the money is there with the Sacramento Mountain Foundation. We know that there is a commitment to do something. And, uh, for the county to say maybe, and then include just patches of the area, I said, because they're, um, they're looking at more of a block-by-block, uh, they're looking at, um, helping with the homes that are, uh, vacant and dilapidated and all that other stuff. So because of that knowledge that I have, I, I just, I think I would hesitate to have, um, the whole area, um, you know, designated as blight, because there is a plan to do something, not just in District Five, but throughout the city. So to me, I think that is like, uh, to have that whole area blighted for the county, it's, it could, it could actually, uh, cause hiccups. And, you know, I said, and then the other thing is that we don't know what venture capital is going to come into our area. And especially for, you know, because I've seen, uh, District Five, and we've been sitting there for a long time. And I, I, I would hate to have those kind of, um, empty promises, like, oh yeah, we're going to develop this area, and as soon as, um, Patriot Point is built, they're out. So I, I really hesitate to, um, to, to do something like it, especially since we have somebody that is so stable, they have the money. Sacramento Mountains will do what they say they're going to do, because they've already committed, we just have to get the approval. So to have a pie in the sky type of thing, I, I have, I have an issue with that.
Yeah, and I, and I think my issue is, now that you're saying this, I'm like, why, I, why are we so, I mean, why is the county so determined to build these apartments? I'm not, whatever, I, I'm just saying that, why are they so determined to build these apartments when we've never seen it before? I just, I, I, whatever, I, to me, I question it, but, you know, I've been honest from the beginning about how I feel about it, so, um.
So it, it would probably be more beneficial for us to just pass tonight, just the parcel that they're building the apartments on, and then it would be, if we want to do a MR, is it called an MRA?
Yeah, yes.
For the area that we were discussing, it would be best if we did it, not the county, because they'll have control over it, correct? Okay, so, if I'm listening and understanding him right, that we need to just do the Patriot Point, and will that face any legal challenges?
No, you could, Mayor Commissioner Reardon, you could, it's just to get it published. So what I would recommend is, if you wanted, if you did, I'm getting, you're the policymakers, want to approve this to publish it. Uh, before it came back for final consideration, we would redraft the description of the property, and tell, and then you're telling the county, you as a governing body are only comfortable with the Patriot Point parcel, if you decide to do that. Hearing all the objections and concerns.
But then.
Then you, yes, so then, this is really back-dooring in a way, because, you know, this developer, whatever reason, I don't know what the history is, but they've ended up at the county, and the county commission, just in public media, said, well, we, we support, as everybody does, more housing if you could do it. And so that's where this, I think, is coming from, from them. Um, but if you really have the bigger issues and pass, you could pass these benefits on potentially to the, the foundations you're talking to, that further incentivize them to do it, then the city creates an area, and then creates its own MR plan, and that's, you are controlling that. So don't let the tail wag the dog here. You, this, the tail's wagging the dog for Patriot Point, I get it, um, so your position makes sense, let's keep it narrow. And then if you wanted to create a bigger one, and then you guys handle that, then you're, that makes more sense.
Yeah, well, we, we could create it, and then the foundation could step in, and it, it offers some incentives for them to do their part.
Creating a district under the MR code gives the governing body, uh, much more flexibility for a public-private partnership.
Multiple districts at one time, okay.
It, it opens up a lot more in the public-private partnership area, that you can then help incentivize redevelopment economically, redevelopment housing, whatever it may be. It is a good mechanism, um, to try to incentivize that coming in for the public body to participate, given anti-donation clause issues and other things, uh, that were referenced earlier, so.
For not giving directions, you did a pretty good job.
Yeah, so, don't tell them I gave you any advice.
I won't say a word.
So for tonight, we're just voting on the publication?
Do we need to?
Not a specific area?
In the motion too, do we need to go ahead and say, we're going to designate just Patriot Point's parcel? Parcel, parcel?
Yes, in, in the motion, if, if that is, if that is what the motion is, is to, um, can, uh, vote on the publication of, the first publication of the ordinance, uh, amending the legal description to include just either the, the, the plot for Patriot Point, um, or however the commission agrees.
I just don't want to give the county control of, of, you know, not that I don't trust them or anything, but, you know, of, of a, that large of a portion of the city. And they would be able to do whatever they kind of wanted to to redevelop it, correct?
Well, yeah, subject to your approval, but you still are then, you know, you have that, maybe it's good, collaboration, both be working on it.
It could, yes, it could.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's another side.
But like I say, I don't think their real intent, their intent is getting this done, not, not redeveloping a big portion of the city.
I think this was Mr. Nichols' attempt, saying, here, I'm just going to make this big area, you guys tell us what you want to bring it down to. I don't think it was, hey, we really want to start running everything within the city. I do think it was what Mr. Moore indicated.
Based off of your conversations with RB, is, is that kind of?
Yes, and they're, they're, from my understanding, in, in trying to, to facilitate cooperation with the city and the county, it is that their intention for their MRA is, is solely the Patriot Point, um, at this point, so, I mean, for the city, that, that, that plot is what basically is, as small as it could go down to, that, that is what is needed of the city.
It's just odd to me, because now I'm hearing, we could have done this ourselves, so I don't understand why, why they went to the county to begin with, why didn't they just ask us to begin with? I find that a little odd, but.
There's, there's also a significant amount of work that's going to go into this. Developing an MRA plan is not an easy thing, so there's still a lot left to do.
It would be done by March.
So here, the, two different things, but excellent point by everyone, that in a larger one, that you're developing, and that's the concept about what you guys maybe want to do, there, there is a lot more work that goes into it, because you are talking about, you know, what kind of things you'd like to see improved, what kind of economic development, things you're trying to get done. Um, and so there's a lot of planning that goes into that. Here, this is very unique, you're talking about one parcel for a multifamily housing. The plan is going to be build multifamily housing, so that's very direct. But, so you're a hundred percent right, but here, on this particular one, if it's just limited to, to Patriot Point, it could be done by March, yes. Because it is so singular in purpose and so small.
So then it goes back to my question. I, it doesn't matter, I mean, at this point, it doesn't matter, but it does go back to my question, why didn't we just do it to begin with?
I don't know what the.
Which I think is a fair question. I don't understand, I, yeah, whatever, anyway.
I just have one more question. So even though, uh, they are going to, you know, go with, uh, the, uh, MRA, they're not going to break ground for how many years?
Oh, I, excellent question, Mayor Protam, Mayor, I don't know what the status of the project is. What I, the limited part that I do know, is that they're getting, uh, federal HUD support, and so there are certain deadlines for that, and so they're trying to get all this stacking of incentives lined up, and so.
They told us.
Yes, and so that's what's happening. But I don't, you're a very fair question, that I don't know exactly when in all of this process, they think they'll be ready to move dirt.
Yeah, because the last I remember, they were waiting till September to see what the interest rates did. They don't even have a loan yet, so.
Well, I think that through the HUD, they're, they're getting a guarantee.
That's just a guarantee, but it's not, but he, but he doesn't have the loan yet.
Right, right, I, you're a hundred percent, yes.
So who knows? I'd be curious to see, or I'd be curious to know, not, that doesn't have anything to do with this, but I would still be curious to know when they plan on breaking ground.
I will say this, uh, if I may, Mayor, the next three weeks or whatever, till this comes back, that's exactly the kind of information that should be getting compiled. So when you come back, we have it defined to be Patriot Point, and that you, because you are giving your consent, this is meaningful, that you know exactly what the timelines are, you know exactly what the, the plan is ultimately, and I think that is information you should have, you know, when you.
Can we get that information?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we go back for, um, the next publication?
Yes, ma'am.
The final publication, could we amend the, the, our ordinance per se to include a start date into the ordinance? You know what I mean, I don't want to approve this and then have it be 10 years down the road before they get it started.
Which is my fear.
And I think that's, that's, you know what I mean? Would we be able to put that in there?
Yes, you could, Mayor, Councilman Reardon, yes, you could put whatever restrictions you want and requirements in there.
Okay.
The 10 years down the road, if you, theoretically, they got this approved in 2026, and they don't do anything, 10 years, they've blown it. Because they, the seven years have elapsed.
So more than likely, they would get started within a year.
The, the way this, the sweet spot for this to work is you get it approved.
And you get going on it.
In tax year 2026, immediately start the development, so that it's fully done in 2027, so that from 2027 to 2033, or 34, whatever that seven years is, you're getting maximum tax benefit.
So when does the clock start ticking, is it when we approve it?
No, when the.
When they start building?
When the county, no, when the county approves it as an MR project. When the county, no, when the county approves it as an MR project. So right now, you're just giving the county consent to create an MR area. The county still has to create an MR.
That even makes me more nervous, but, okay.
So, but that's back to Commissioner Reardon's point. You can put in your ordinance, this approval is contingent on earth being moved in 2026, no later than December 31, 2026. So you have some, and if not, the ordinance is...
It goes away.
Is voided, yes. So they work hand in hand, yeah.
So we would do that tonight?
No. You just, what I would, this is, again, the first reading. Before it comes back, that would be included in the ordinance, or other concerns you have, or restrictions you'd like to be in. Let Mr. Maury know, Ms. Huff know, and we can put it in the ordinance. And again, you know, like...
So in a motion to approve this tonight, do you need that in there?
Do you need that direction?
Or do you just need it as direction for tonight?
You just needed the specifics of the property.
I would move that, or I would suggest that you all, that Commissioner to act upon the first publication, at first with that designation of...
Is your mic on?
No.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry. I think I've mentioned before, I kind of have a hearing problem.
And then if we want to add a start date, or a, hey, it expires at such and such date, then we can do that on the second reading.
Correct.
Okay, so we can do that on the second reading?
Yes.
Okay.
They are asking for your consent. And so you can make it specific to what project size you want, and what conditions that consent is.
Okay, I would support that if I knew we were putting those conditions.
I think his, December 31st of 2026 is, you know, that way, hey, you're feeding to the fire, get over here and get it done, you know?
So they, they have to break ground by then, or?
The MRA.
Okay, well, we'll ask, you know. But for tonight, you need a, I'll go ahead and make it, a motion to approve ordinance 1720, and the designated area will be just the Patriot Points currently owned property over there.
Correct.
Does that sound right?
Correct, yeah.
So I have a, I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to approve just the Patriot Point lot, right, as an MRD? Do we call it an MRD or an MRA?
Metropolitan redevelopment area, so MRA.
Area, A, an MRA. And then I have a second from, no, I know who you are. I wanted to call you Mayor-elect, but fine, never mind then. From Mayor Protem McDonald.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm just giving her a hard time, that's all. I have a second from Mayor Protem McDonald.
Is this a roll call?
Is this a roll call? It is a roll call.
This is a roll call.
Yes, can you?
Absolutely. Mayor Protem, Sheriff McDonald?
I don't even know what the term is anymore.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie?
Aye.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Mayor Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. What is the term? Can you, I guess, call the roll?
Please call the roll.
Woo, man.
Yes, you got it right, correct.
Okay, all right, sorry, I just had a blank. It's been a long night. Okay, we are going to move on to item 12. Consider and approve, consider, consider and approve resolution. I'm just reading, and I don't think it was written right. But anyway, consider and approve resolution 2025-35. I think you mean consider and act upon, right? Resolution 2025-35 authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance for project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority.
This is the nadatorium. I had to read this and read this and read this.
Yeah, I apologize that nadatorium did not end up in the item number, but it should be financial for the new nadatorium project approval.
It's in the third, whereas in the resolution, it's just not in the description.
Yeah, well, I got thrown off because it said consider and approve.
Yeah, it kind of fell apart in general.
Is that like Evelyn's telling us what to do?
No, it's called Evelyn was out of town, so someone else put this on the...
Oh, sorry, I'm just giving you a hard time. It's been a long night, okay. Does anybody have any questions on that?
So just a little bit of background, and then, of course, Chris and John Archuleta are here to answer questions on this. But this is to begin the funding process for the $12 million for the new nadatorium. So the design process is far enough along at this point. And Justin Boyle is here too, if you have any questions on the design process. But it's far enough along at this point that we can start moving forward with getting the funding in place, so that when the design is ready, we can, we can break ground. But Chris and John have some more information about what we're looking at.
Mayor, that summed it up perfectly. This is just the first step. So under the process, the finance, you submit an application, which John's firm has done for signature, that would be submitted to the New Mexico Finance Authority. That board would approve the project up to the $12 million at their December meeting. The big moment for the commission is approving an ordinance authorizing the loan agreement and incurring the debt with the Finance Authority for the $12 million. That will happen after the first of the year. If it goes smoothly, and everybody's in agreement to do that, you'd be looking to close and have money into February, early March, which I think ties closer to when you would be ready to roll. So this is, just kicks it off, it's non-binding. I mean, it supports putting the application in, but it doesn't mean that you are required to go yes on the ordinance. It's just, it's the first step.
This will give us a total of 16 million then? With the $4 million of the Lita money that was transferred, and then?
Correct. So what, so the instruction that I have given to Justin and to Belinda is that they need to have a $12 million pool designed. A $12 million pool, then that gives us the $4 million to deal with contingency, to deal with, as it is, we've already had to put in new sewer connections. We had to do a change order on the Oregon Street project to be able to get the plumbing right. And so we are going to debt the $12 million, but there will be 16 available for the total project.
For any contingencies.
For contingencies, because, you know, we know how it goes.
Yes, okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2025-35.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to approve item 12. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie? Will the clerk please call the roll? Now it's coming back to me, sorry.
Mayor Protem, Sheriff McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie?
Aye.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Mayor Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to, oh, Lord, I just had it up here. Item 13, appointments to boards and committees. I have one, thank you.